And I entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Yule and Mr. O'Leary as temporary secretary.
Either one of you?
Yeah.
Mr. Yule, please closest to it. Okay.
Mr. Yule.
Mr. Yule.
I'll second that.
Second?
Yep.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jeff. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a seasonal license renewal for the Thompson Club. Do we want to do minutes or wait?
Well, it's on the first.
Yeah, if it's through.
Minutes, okay. We have minutes from March 7th, regular session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the March 7th, 2016, regular session minutes as written.
Second my Mr. O'Leary, any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. We also have an executive session for March 7th. Mr. Yule, when you're ready.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve March 7th, 2016, executive session minutes as written.
A second.
Second my Mr. O'Leary. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. We have March 14th only regular session. When you're ready, Mr. Yule.
Well, thank you. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the March 14th, 2016, regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Second my Mr. O'Leary, any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. We have seasonal license renewal for Thompson Club. Mr. Gilberto?
The Board has before it the renewal of the Thompson Club's license for service of alcoholic beverages. As the Board saw at the last meeting, they've gone through some changes in terms of the configuration there. This would be the seasonal license for the snack shack, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
And one thing I would note, we always ask the Board to vote, subject to all regulatory approvals, there is one outstanding question with regard to the service of food at the snack shack that we'll address with the Board of Health prior to actually issuing the signed license.
Okay. Mr. Yule, can I have a motion?
Yes, you may. Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the seasonal wine and malt beverage license for Thompson Club Pro Shop to a Mid Iron Drive to expire December 31, 2016, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second.
Second my Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? Captain, the town administrators mentioned that on this liquor license, there's still something to be resolved with the Board of Health prior to it being released.
That's correct, and it's tied to the development that they've had down there and the reconfiguration of the site.
So on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Anyone here for public comment?
Mr. Chairman, just one note with regard to seasonal licenses. The Board customarily, at the end of March or beginning of April, signs a seasonal renewal certification, which will be asked to do at the next meeting. There is one outstanding area where we may or may not have a renewal request, and if we receive it, then we will submit it to the Board.
Okay, can we do that on the agenda for next meeting?
No, we can tonight, that's outstanding.
Again, anybody who has public comment?
The fourth.
Okay, coming right along. Mr. Gilberto, review the town meeting warrant. Can I take it this is just a brief run through the articles?
It's very brief, a list, essentially. There is no language that's in the list. In addition to the standard articles that we have in for town meetings, some of the things that I would highlight are a couple of appropriations related to the MWRA transition for water. In particular, the potential that we would ask the town for authority for the Board to apply to and join the MWRA, as well as requests for additional funding for design associated with the MWRA water interconnection. We have a request which may or may not be part of the capital improvement article that's specific to restroom facilities for Arthur J. Kenny Field, which there is a subcommittee of multiple town boards that's been looking at that particular item, so we put this item on there. Again, it may come up as a recommendation out of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, depending upon the nature of the discussion and the cost, really. We have three articles, 24, 25, and 26, relative to Community Planning Commission initiatives for studies that are one-time in nature, and we've identified these separately, although it's possible that we may recommend, prior to the warrant being signed, that they be consolidated into a single warrant article. Going through to Article 36 and 37. 36, the use of security funds for the completion of subdivisions by the town. This was brought to light as a result of work to be done on a public way that has been impacted by a subdivision. And what we have noted after working with town council is that there is a statute that we would need to accept in order to be able to establish a mechanism to recover the funding from that subdivision that's been set aside as a bond to be utilized to recover the town's costs. And rather than speak vaguely, specifically to Charles Street, Havel Street, there's some work that needed to be done up there in December, which the Public Works Department oversaw, utilizing a contractor. They essentially covered the cost out of the town roads appropriation for capital. However, this would allow us to recover those dollars and replenish that account from the bond associated with the project. Number 37 is a petition to the School Committee relative to the naming of the corridor at North Reading Middle and High School. And number 38, as the Board is aware, a number of months ago, we received a citizen's petition relative to the disposition of civil traffic infractions. We did obtain an opinion from town council, which we provided to the Board, and which I assume we would be presenting at town meeting.
What's the background of that, do you know?
It was a citizen's petition that had the requisite number of petitions. It was submitted in a timely fashion to be included on the June town meeting warrant.
This was the fellow that wanted to become the judge, jury, and executioner of the tickets, right?
That's correct. That's correct. That is correct. Could not have said it better. And so, you know, we'll certainly do our best to inform the public as to what information we've been provided. Now, again, this is a citizen's petition and not a proposal to the Board.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Yule.
Yeah, on that, as far as due process is concerned, I mean, he's finished. All he has to do now is come to town meeting. He doesn't have to do anything between now and then.
He had the requisite certified signatures to have the item be on the warrant. Once he meets that threshold, it gets submitted to the Board for inclusion on the warrant, and part of our obligations are to include it on the warrant.
And they do.
Does not mean that we have to recommend in favor of it, but it would mean that the Board would need to include it on the warrant.
Doesn't mean that it's legal.
And it doesn't mean that it's legal, is probably the most important thing.
Is that right? Okay. Okay, so, but again, all he has to do at this point is come to the town meeting.
He's done all he needed to do.
That's right, okay. That's what I want to clarify.
Mr. Prisco.
So whether we vote in favor or not, it still goes?
It will be on the warrant, yes.
Thank you.
Would you, what is the re-appropriate water bond proceeds for?
If I recall, we had had some discussion leading up to the October town meeting for the inclusion of some funding associated with the tower hill anchor bolts that we were going to reappropriate for work in advance of the MWRA project. It proved to be something that we could not do because the work we were doing was more design and engineering-related. This is a project that won't be proceeding, so we're going to re-insent that borrowing. We retained earnings in October to cover the cost rather than this.
So there's an Article 14 to rescind the debt of water, is that what you're talking about?
That is, yes. Did I answer the wrong question?
And then there's a re-appropriate the water bond proceeds, so that we can in fact do the engineering, I take it?
Was that 362 project? No, no, it was not. I believe, and the Finance Director is not here right now, but I believe there's an unexpendated balance that we may have with a water appropriation that needs to be re-appropriated because it's already been borrowed for. But the Finance Director will be here shortly to speak to that if there's a further question.
And the appropriate funds for sanitary facilities at the bathrooms at the turf field, is that sponsored by the Board of Selectmen or by the School Committee at this point, do you know?
It could be the School Committee, it could be the Facilities Use Committee. It hasn't been determined yet as to who's going to be the sponsor. We need some upfront costs to do some engineering and design plans.
But the location currently being considered is on school property, not town property?
Right now, the current, we're talking about several proposals here, but one is where the current snack shack is. That straddles the Enterprise property of the Hillview, which is where the football field is, and straddles school property.
Okay.
So until it's determined where the location's going to be. But nonetheless, because of the timelines attached to the permit, we're going to have to get some money appropriated to do some feasibility study and design plans.
Mr. Chairman?
Probably go to October town meeting for full funding.
Yeah, is there any benefit either way, putting the structure on school property versus town property? Is there an advantage to us either way?
You mean Hillview Enterprise property? Yeah, we get them the baseball.
No, 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 I guess I.
But I don't think they're going to tell us the money's available right now. Right, Peter? In about 10 minutes. I mean, if it were on the football field, obviously it would be on the Enterprise.
Right. But is there an advantage to one versus the other?
No, no advantage.
No advantage.
As far as restrictions, as far as restrictions are concerned?
No.
Space.
Because the town property, is that not the school property in this case?
The school property, which is where the baseball field is and where the new fields are being structured.
Right.
Right. That's school property.
That's school property.
Right. And the football field?
Is the Enterprise, I got that.
That's all you got.
All right, so there's no advantage between putting on school property versus putting on the Enterprise property? As far as restrictions?
It's a matter of finding the best location, I think, right?
Restrictions are concerned or anything like that?
No, as far as what we need to do to meet the requirements, those are set. Where it's physically located, doesn't matter. We still will have the same.
As long as it's not up on top of the hill with the high school.
Right.
It's got to be close to the.
No, no, that I understand, I understand, okay.
Okay. Any other questions regarding?
Yeah, there's still awaiting different questions.
Article lists at this point. Okay, it's just about time for the beginning of the budget hearings. Hillview is first. Let's see, building chair.
Mr. Hemmy.
We can, I guess maybe we give Liz a minute to get in, she's just coming down the hall.
Please.
We'll wait for our financial pictures. Any other members of the FINCOM expected?
Abby don't know. Abby will not be able to know that.
Just a big number, 4.4. They just randomly do it. I don't think there was anything that's sticking out. They just randomly, it's called job security. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, totally.
I think we're good.
All set?
All set.
Good Liz.
Good evening, Peter Hemmy, Treasurer of the Hillview Committee, George Stack, the Chairman of the Committee. We're here to present the budget for next year. Before we talk about next year, just a brief run through what's happened to the previous year at Hillview. It's been a very busy year for us at the Hillview Committee. We took on a very ambitious project of replacing the irrigation system. We're happy to say that that system did turn on in the beginning of the year. None of the sprinkler heads blew. We actually were able to water the greens in the facility. We did have some startup issues. There was some miscommunication about the new electronics and how to use the system, caused some problems with a couple of the greens. Those problems have been resolved. We are repairing those greens. They have started to come back, and we anticipate that by the time the golf season goes over, everything will be back to normal. In addition, the GFMI who runs the golf course also took the opportunity to hire an assistant superintendent to add more resources to the maintenance of the facility. Said hopefully, you know, these type of things don't happen again. We also began renovations of the kitchen in the pub area. It's been a long process, but we are moving forward. We have, we got our first bid, I guess. We're moving forward, we're very anxious to get that done and complete as soon as possible because it will be open for the golfers. We also have signed on, as you know, with a new operator of the banquet facility. He seems very energized, put a lot of his own money into the facility. Had 450 people at an Easter brunch this past weekend, so things are moving forward in that area. As far as the golf industry is concerned, there actually is some good news. There's actually been some small improvements in the overall golf industry across the country. For the first time in a number of years, the number of rounds played did not decrease. They actually remained flat. So that, you know, is a good sign for the industry as a whole that, you know, at least things are not going in the opposite direction. From Hillview's standpoint, you know, things are looking good. We obviously, with the warm winter, we opened earlier, which is great. We've had people out there, the reception has been very good, people are playing, and we're looking forward to a great year. As far as the 2017 budget, we submitted a budget that showed that our total spending is down slightly from last year, about 2.5 percent. About half of that is due to lower debt service in the coming year, and the other half is some savings from some minor spending in various areas. So overall, we're looking at basically a flat to down budget for next year. Revenue, we anticipate being flat as well.
Questions?
When they go in the other direction, it's pretty easy.
So the funds for the kitchen, Peter, coming from an article that was passed several years ago?
Correct. Yes, and we are committed to get those spent by the end of the fiscal year this year and get everything completed.
And the project's going to take up whatever the remainder of those funds are?
Correct.
Steve, you have any comments?
Well, they continue to be great stewards of our enterprise, and certainly appreciate all the efforts put in with it. As I said, it's been a very busy year with the change in operators.
We don't come looking for money.
Just in relation to, but just in relation to the payment of lieu of taxes, Peter? It's still in suspension?
That's still in suspension, just as, you know, we presented last year, and will continue.
Yeah, what, one more year after 17?
Two more years.
Two more years.
Just try to rush it, move it up.
Mr. Prisco.
Is there still a plan to commit and continue to keep your liquor license in the pro shop? Did you guys make a decision on that yet?
The plan is not to, I think right now, to keep our license.
Well, it actually wasn't liquor, it was just.
Just beer.
Not liquor, sorry, beer.
But, no, that was an agreement that Chris was nice enough, the pro was nice enough to step up for us over the last two years, but with understanding it had a shelf life. And Lieutenant has his liquor license, so he will do what he, you know, he will do to satisfy the golfers.
Okay.
That's great, that's really good, thank you.
Anyone else? FINCOM?
Couple of questions on the budget. In your narrative, you say that fuel costs have gone down. In the volume, you request around like $5,000.
No. Down, down, decrease.
You're requesting $8,000.
Decrease.
The narrative says five.
Says decrease five. I guess she's looking at the budget.
No, our budget adds it up, so if the narrative says five, it should be, that's incorrect. The narrative is incorrect. Budget is correct.
Why is it going up so much?
When you actually look at the spending from the previous year, it was 26, the actual spending. So the budget was three. The budget was just way too low. We are, we're cutting the greens more frequently now, cutting the facility more frequently, using more, more gas.
You spent less than 1,600 for December.
Yep, but now we're coming into the busy part of the year, right?
And you're projecting it's going to be over $3,000 per year?
Yep.
The other question I had was on cot rental taxes. Can you think of what that is?
That's the taxes for when people rent the cars.
The sales taxes?
Sales taxes, correct.
How does that relate to your rental income? Because it looks like it's something other than the 64%.
There is also money above when we book an outing. The outing cost includes the fees for carts as well, so there could be a classification that's not broken out. Because we don't break.
Tax on that.
Tax on that piece as well. We do it for the sales tax calculation, we don't necessarily break it out in the line.
Any other questions on the FINCOM?
Best of luck this season. You're off to a good start.
See you at Hillview.
And we, Hillview will be up and running again so that the townspeople can have their Christmas party.
We'll be coming sooner than Christmas.
Yes, indeed. We have youth services, we're running with potential.
Youth Services is coming in right now. You're welcome. That's the best seat. You know when the duck bursts.
Okay, Youth Services, you arrived just in time.
Whenever you're ready.
Sure. So I remember last year that you had said that you liked the progression over time information, so I gave that to you again this year. And I just wanted to highlight the increase in about 33% participation this year, which has been great. And biggest being in the mentor program, we had about 50 kids this last session, which is huge. And the second biggest category was in our middle school youth group. I have about 38 kids enrolled and have about 20 a week. Except for today, I had a group of all girls, which I thought was different. And my biggest effect is when they have drama. So I lose all my kids to drama and band, so. It's been a very busy season for us, and you'll see also the increase in calls related to social services. Or, I'm sorry, it was on track last year, but we had, yeah, 81 already this year. So I usually kind of share a story with everybody, and so this one is going to be about the Early Act Club from this year. So if you remember seeing in the paper, and thank you to Selectman Yule who came by and visited our kids, a few months ago, when we begin a new Early Act Club, which by the way is a community service club based on a Rotary International model, and the kids came in with me and they love getting a tour of this building. And this is the room that they're always most impressed with. They don't know what goes on here, they see the cameras, they see the chairs, and the very official podium and microphone, and they go nuts over it. And so we gave them a challenge, and the challenge was to come up with something that they wanted to improve in the community. And then we came here and they played the role of selectmen and moderator, and they had to present their ideas. And so if you remember seeing in the transcript a couple of months ago, that was without a doubt the best program. And so I kind of like to explain that that program is actually kind of an educational program. I used to think it was more community involvement and social, but I've kind of changed the way I look at it now. And it really teaches the kids about civic engagement, that they're part of a bigger community. And just last week, they stuffed Easter eggs with candy and delivered them to the food pantry so that parents who were shopping at the food pantry would have eggs to hide for their kids. And so it's become a little bit column A, a little column B, but that program stays steady at around anywhere from 10 to 12 kids per session. So related to the budget, the biggest jump, so first of all, if you see, I asked for another $20 in, and I think it's office supplies technically, it's listed, but it's actually really for food. The kids love snack, they really, I give them snack at Early Act, at middle school youth group, and also the high school youth group. And that really makes or breaks the program. Sometimes the kids don't have time to go home and eat snack in between programs, and we found it to be pretty important. And I always shop with coupons and do my deals, too. And the other thing is, I put in for tuition for a master's program. So you'll see, the program that I would love to participate in is at Northeastern. I looked at four programs, so I looked at my alma mater at BC, Salem State and North Shore Community College, and those just weren't feasible financially, and they weren't feasible for time. So what I like about the Northeastern program is it's online completely, and you set your own schedule. The other programs didn't have that combination, they didn't have that flexibility, and they were way more expensive. Specifically, actually, the Salem State program would have been a master's in social work, but I wouldn't be able to work. I would have to leave and take time to do my clinicals, and that's just not feasible to me. That's just going on in Youth Services.
Questions, Mr. Prisco?
So not the pick on the tuition reimbursement view, it's more of a question from the town administrator.
Sure.
Because prior to your arrival, this was one of the subjects that your prior administrator was supposed to take on. Because we had some concern about how we deal with tuition reimbursement, and Liz could probably fill in where I missed some information on this. But I think this is a wonderful thing, and I think we should do it. Problem is, I think we're missing a program on how we go about administering it. You know, handing out $15,000, rough $15,000 without any commitment of you staying here in the town of North Reading makes me a little, it makes me very unnerved, okay? And we need to have a program.
Understood.
And I'm not sure if that was something you were going to, I know it was on your to-do list, what's going on. It was certainly an action prior to your arriving here, so I'm not holding you accountable for it. But if you have any insight you could share, I would appreciate it.
I do have insight. I don't want to speak for the Youth Services Director, but I think she understands our concerns and is willing to work with the town with regard to some reasonable conditions that would protect the town and investment in her. At the same time, one of the issues we're looking at is it's a significant expense, certainly a justifiable expense, but a significant expense at a time when we are still in the process of reconciling the budget to be within bounds. So I've expressed that to Amy prior to making this recommendation to the Board. I think that if we can find the ability to fund this for next year, that she would be open to terms and conditions that would be amenable to address the issues that I think the Board has had in the past. At the same time, I wouldn't foreclose the possibility that we wouldn't have a policy in place effective the beginning of the fiscal year anyway that would affect all employees. So I think we're aware of the issue and that we're prepared to take steps either through a formal official policy or through something that's not necessarily a policy, but an agreement between myself and the Youth Services Director to address those concerns. And again, the concerns being length of commitment after and performance in the class.
I support this for you, I really do, and I want it to happen. And so I hope we can move quickly and make this happen.
Thanks.
And the last thing I have on it is $20? If all you're asking for is $20?
Yeah.
I mean, I think you need to go back and change your budget.
Town administration asks us to keep you pretty level, and I think that we're doing that pretty well. We're coming right in on budget, but I anticipate, you know, one more baseball, one more party.
I've heard nothing but wonderful things. We continue to hear wonderful things about this program. And it's the little things, I think, make your program wonderful, so, you know, there is no reason that budget shouldn't be another $300 or $400 in there. I know, you wrinkle your eyes, but you know what?
Did I?
It gets to kids. It gets to kids. I'll pay, I'll put, I'll give you the money, it's not a problem. It's $300 that, look what it does, it attracts more kids, it's the little things that get them in the door. Am I wrong?
It's so true.
It's so true. Go back and shop in your pencil. We can deduct. We can deduct it somewhere else. You know, Liz is coming up tonight. Easy to take three hundred dollars out of her budget. Great job though.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you two for supporting the CIT.
Oh, yes.
Because that event you had in plain sight was unbelievable.
Thank you.
My wife hasn't stopped talking about it.
I agree.
And if anybody in town missed it, it's unfortunate we don't have, do we video it? I don't know if we video it.
No.
Oh.
Purposely, we did not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if it comes around next year, if anybody missed it, please make sure. And if you're interested, I assume they could see you and you can give them some tips?
Absolutely. And in fact, I'm sorry, I didn't even mention that in your packet, you'll also see the budget for the Drug Free Communities Grant, the federal grant that we submitted this year. It'll, we'll find out in September if we got it.
Thank you.
Kathleen.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
What you requested was for half the tuition?
Yes.
Or is it just for, for part-time commitment to going or?
It's a two-year program. So the following year I would have to ask.
So that full twenty-seven or twenty-eight thousand, that's the full amount?
That's right.
Okay. And just probably, this is probably from Mike. Did, did we ever have any kind of a tuition reimbursement for any employee here?
Yes.
We do?
We have, we have, we've had a program. I'll be careful not to use another word. But we have a program that we've implemented and made available to employees. I think that the concern in the past has been that there are, it hasn't been very heavy on structure or parameters. And I think that that's where the concern comes up. But I can't stress enough, I think Amy understands that concern as a woman of the town.
Is that program available to Amy currently?
Depending upon funding, yes.
And do we, do we usually fund it annually?
I would say that-
Put money in there annually?
Depending upon the nature of the request, yes. I mean, I can tell you that requests come through from the, it's generally from the larger operating departments, and they're included in the request, and they generally are forwarded through. Last year, Amy had made this request. I was not able to fund it at that point in time. This year, I indicated that I would, you know, I would hold it in at this point, where we're going through a bit of a different budget process than we did last year. Again, with the caveat that there's some reconciliation that still has to be done with regard to the budget.
Steel.
Yeah, I just want to interrate the, the Early Impact Club that you have, having, as I said at one of our past meetings, having attended that, the learning process that they have by just their simple interaction with each other and with Amy and with the guests that, that she has attend, you can see how she's giving them fundamental character to all of them, whether they realize it or not, that they're getting that. And they're interacting in a very respectful way that is, is very key to be implemented in the kids' minds when they're young and at that age. So I do applaud you for, for that program.
I see you have your pin on.
I do, I do.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've been wearing it. So, thank you. It's a very good program. And you're doing a super job overall. I know that's not the only thing that you do, so.
Finance committee, have any questions, Dawn?
I think the question's probably from Mike. I noticed there's no salary increase. Is that included in the salary pool? That's why it's on here.
That's correct, yes.
Dan?
Amy, the reality fair objective, how does that relate compared to the regular offer by the school?
Well, first of all, it's fully privately funded. We have a very nice donation. By the way, I'm not sure if everybody's aware that Nerissa, which originally funded my department, dissolved this year. And they had some funds that were available to them, they need to do something. So they agreed to fully fund it. So there are some costs involved. The other thing is that it directly ties in the community. So a school program or a school curriculum would be taught by obviously the professional instructors. This is actually facilitated by the community. It ties in a totally different element. It also ties in professionals. So for example, somebody who works in finance or mortgages would host the mortgage table. Somebody who works in insurance would host the insurance table to answer those real-life questions. And I think that to me is the biggest tie-in, is the community. So the community gets exposure to the school and the students and vice versa.
So I'd just make a few last comments. You know, working with Amy on the CIT, all I can say is that she goes above and beyond. A great leader, fully energetic, and we're really, really pleased to have you.
Thank you.
And I think we should go all out to support her request. Hopefully, we can find a way.
Plus the three hundred dollars.
You want to be invited to a party, huh?
No. I, I want the kids to have a good party.
No, they will, yeah.
I want you to get enrollment up.
Any other questions for Amy?
May I extend one more invitation? So for those of you, if you didn't make it to the, the In Plain Sight event, or if you'd like to come again and see a different perspective, the Wakefield Coalition is hosting theirs next week, and they've asked me to come help out with theirs. And so I can extend the invitation to you all. It's open to the community, but they actually are taking some of our ideas. So I love that. And we're, it's a sharing, it's very much a collaborative effort with, with Wakefield. So I would extend that to all of you if you didn't make it. And even the finance committee, if you'd like to come and see the In Plain Sight event, it'll be, I think, three days next week, so I can get that info to you.
Great.
Thanks.
Should get it to the paper too. Okay. We have elder services. Did I see? Mary?
Welcome, everyone. As I was thinking about what I was going to say at my presentation tonight, I thought I'd tell you the usual. I talk about our programs and some of the successes. Like the success of our fire safety program, again, this year, where we work with the fire department to install fire and have an oxide detectors in our senior's homes free of charge. Which by the way, firefighters are a whole diseases program. It's honored at last year's Chamber Outstanding Citizen Awards Dinner. Or maybe our new civil law program, where we work with the police department to register a loved one to suffer from dementia or Alzheimer's who may wander us, which also includes families with children of autism. On my favorite statistic of all, I always love to tell you about it, with our sixteen thousand meals we deliver to our home-delivered meals, cuffed clients, a surgery, the senior center with the help of Mr. Valley Elder Services. I realize we're putting this in writing that most everything we do in our department, we do with someone else or some other agency or department. So instead, I'm going to share a story about my social service part of the job. A week ago Sunday, I received a call from Captain Joe Marauder of the Fire Department telling me he was at, let's call it Andy, I violated HIPAA laws. He was at our house. He told me that there was a safety concern about her home and that she appeared to have some medical issues, and they were going to transport her to the hospital. I told my husband I had to go to Andy's because she was being transported to the hospital. He knew the Andy because through the years, I've called him on it many times for his services in one way or another to help her out. When I arrived at her home, she wasn't happy or too agreeable about leaving her home, but she did. Andy is a ninety-six-year-old, four foot eleven, maybe ninety-five pound, visually impaired for the last two years, woman. A woman who is a uniquely complicated eccentric lady, who lives very simply. She lived in her home in North Reading for over sixty-five years and probably for the last thirty-five years alone. She has one daughter who lives in another town, but because of Andy's personality, it's been a difficult relationship. When I arrived at the hospital, she was sitting up in a bed and being asked lots of questions by the triage nurse and the mission staff. After I helped her navigate that part of the stay, we had a long talk about religion, politics, and basically the state of the world. And if any of you have been in an emergency lately, you can imagine how long that conversation was before we saw the emergency doctor. But finally, he came. After a few general questions, a brief physical exam, the doctor asked Andy who I was. She replied, "Oh, that's Mary Preney." And when asked how she knew me, she said, "I was her friend." He then asked how we became friends, and now my story begins. About our town, my town, and your town. And the village we live in, not only to raise our children, but to help our senior citizens. Andy proceeded to tell the doctor that when she was at the town hall many years ago, the wonderful ladies in the tax department, after helping her with property taxes, told me she could call Mary and maybe she can get some more services and issues that she needed to be addressed. And let me tell you, Andy never traveled without a large bag of very important papers, which were never, never in order. But those wonderful ladies in the tax collector's office always treated with her kindness, patience, and respect. One time a few years ago, I received a call from Evelyn in Reading Collective, concerned that she hadn't seen Andy in a few months. Not because of her non-payment, but because she was concerned about her well-being. Even though when Andy visited Reading, like, she had long conversations with many of the staff when they would take her payments. Most times, they'd think the staff took turns when they saw Andy coming, but they always treated her again with respect. With the help from our partners at Kitchen and Community Center, Andy never went hungry on Thanksgiving and Christmas Day. He was always a high meal delivery. And when times needed, she always got meals from the group here. Then there were the folks at Papagino's, who she called occasionally for delivery, or maybe just five times a day to find out what time it was. Again, the staff at Papagino's was kind and considerate. Of the amazing folks at Mario's Restaurant, which was her favorite, who she ordered from at least five or six times a week. Sometimes she had the cash, sometimes she didn't. But she promised to pay them when she got to the bag, which if I was lucky, was maybe every three months. She always paid her bills and took pride in paying her town taxes whenever she could because she knew that was important. Mario's never denied her order and would make a trip when even she just wanted a cup of coffee, some sugar, or her favorite, Frank's hot sauce. And at least once a week, they would surprise her with a special sweep. The men of our fire department and police department, who all knew her very well, especially in the last few years when her vision became worse and all she could do was dial nine-one-one. Of course, she told me that that was okay. She told me that they had a special commission with both departments on how best to contact them. And believe it or not, I believe it was okay with them too. For Officer Conley, who would bring her a sandwich at two-thirty a.m. from the local twenty-four-hour convenience store when she called and said she was hungry. And he knew enough even not to bring her tuna sandwich because tuna had mercury in it. Because this was in his first trip to Andy's house. And young Officer Lucci, who told me he felt guilty, no joke intended, every time he went into the donut store and didn't have time to bring Andy a, donate her a cup of coffee. To our wonderful precious firefighters, who got calls at three a.m. who asked if they had any beer aspirin in the firehouse and could they possibly drop off two because she felt she was getting a cold. I'm not going to tell you how that worked out, but I'm sure if someone they accommodated her. To just recently, when firefighter Tommy Harris helped her out getting her furnace repaired in the coldest weekend we had this winter, with not one phone call, but many phone calls to the oil company to make sure that worked. Andy never agreed to any type of services from Mr. Valley Elder Services until the past six months ago. I knew she was giving up her independence when she agreed to do this. She had a shopper who came once a week with her favorite foods and took out her trash. Sometimes she let her in, sometimes she didn't. Sometimes the shopper would just pass things through her den window, which most times was her most favorite way of communicating with people. We had good luck in getting her to agree on meals and wheels, at least through the coldest part of the winter this year. And almost every day for many years, the senior center staff and volunteers had some sort of interaction with Andy. Some days it was hectic and complicated, but they always tried to accommodate the best way they could. Almost always with the utmost respect. When Andy was transported to the hospital on Sunday, myself, the police, and the firefighters and Carl, all who knew her well, knew she wouldn't be coming home to her house again. It was sad. I think we all felt that we let her down. But we were able to contact your daughter, who made it to the hospital tonight, and now she's very involved in her mother's care and in her life. But it was time. She was no longer safe. But for many years, I came to realize that as a community, we helped Andy remain in her home with dignity and respect as any human being deserved. There are stories every day that take place in North Reading. Thank God, most of them not as complicated, that my team in the Human Service Department, Amy Lokavitz, our new service director, and Sue Magna, our defense agent, deal with every day and try their best to make life better for many of these residents. I want to thank our town administrator, who recognizes the importance of our team to the community, and for bringing us all together once a month at any time we need to talk or share a story and offer helpless help in any way possible. I want to end by saying that it's an honor to be Andy's friend and to be able to tell her story tonight and thank the community for what they have done for Andy. So that's my story. We have my FY seventeen budget in front of you. It's simple like Andy's. I am only asking for town-level services. And I want to know if anyone has any questions?
Questions, anybody?
You happy with the van?
Oh, yeah.
It's nice.
Yeah, we're working on it, thank you.
So just talk to me quickly about the radio. So the old, was there a radio?
The old radio is a walkie-talkie. We can converse with the driver with some sort of machinery that's at our center. It is so old. The only thing I have on it is when they sent the former director a letter saying they were changing companies, and that was over twenty-five years ago. So it's the only way we can communicate with the driver. And it's actually, right now, the only way we can get into the D C W because of whatever frequencies we have.
Are you the only one in town that has this type of radio that you're purchasing? Is someone else?
I have no idea. I have no idea, but it's old.
I know we have different radios in towns. I wasn't sure if this was a common thing. We've, we use in other departments.
We could look close, more closely at it.
That would be fine. I'm, I'm very concerned because if something does happen to it.
No, you should get it.
We need something to be able to communicate. Because our drive is very important. As you can see in Andy's story, something happens to someone's house, something happens on the road, we always have communication.
Yeah.
She doesn't have to use her cell phone.
I just figured we'd buy something common that we have somewhere else in town.
Fine with me. Whatever it is, it would be fine.
Can you come, any questions for the?
Can I read her a few, a few minutes ago? As you know, as this coming Friday is the one social parks. It's on, hope to sponsor, our hopes to have a new intergenerational community center for the town in North Reading. She asked me personally to deliver this to Bob, so you can read and announce the, the celebration on Friday night.
I'd be happy to do that. And thank you for the story.
Thank you. And there are many stories out there, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, before we go on to the next one, I will read this. Friends of the North Reading Parks and Recreation, fifteenth annual spring wine and food social. It's coming Friday, April first, in two thousand and sixteen, seven and ten. At Teresa's at the Hillview. So it'll be citizens' first opportunity to see the refurbished function hall and the new care keeper. The fee is forty dollars per ticket. It's featuring top wines from around the world, fine cuisine tasting, variety of lagers, silent auction, and a raffle. And I, my wife and I have attended this for, I think, since the beginning. And it's a great tape. Great tape.
I'm going to miss it for the first time in a long time. It's a great, great event.
Reminds me, I haven't got my ticket. Treasurer collected budget next. Mary Ann? Well, some?
Do you want to start with my treasury part?
Treasury.
Your, your choice.
Okay. We'll start with the treasury budget. So my treasury budget, the only increase that we have is three hundred dollars, and that is for longevity for my assistant. She's the, she gets paid out of this budget, along with my staffing gets paid out of this budget. Everything else is in my treasury budget.
Basically, level services, no changes. Any board members have questions? Can you come?
Yeah, I don't have anything.
One percent.
All right, we'll move on to the collector.
Okay. In my collective budget last year-
Collection budget is eighty-two.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. I believe second flip, and you'll be just need a moment to review.
Yeah, I didn't have, for whatever reason, a copy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I just wanted to take a quick look at this, okay? Seeing that it's so complicated, that, I think I'm okay.
Okay, and the collector? Will we go on to the treasurer?
Yes.
Jeff, you're all set?
I'm all set.
Okay. Last year, when we presented the budget on professional services, we had legal on computer, so you asked us to combine that this year. So I did combine that, so there was no increase money-wise for that because we just increased the lines. And then for the education and training, Munis Conference is coming to Boston this year. So my staff, myself and my staff are going to take advantage of the opportunity year, so my staff, myself and my staff are going to take advantage of the opportunity to go over to Boston and take some Munis training. And then the postage, I did add postage to my budget for, the postage didn't swap a slight, went up like a penny, so I just put a little extra money in my budget for the postage. And then for travel, just for when I go to, to get reimbursed for travel.
Questions from the board?
Need to call. Question.
Michael?
So the travel was $25, right?
Yes. No, it was actually 50. In the narrative, I saw that today, it said 25.
I was confused, the narrative, yeah, thank you. Okay, so it is 50. I wasn't sure, I was missing something.
No.
Thank you.
Finn, Calm, any questions? We've got our duties tonight.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hope everyone had a great Easter yesterday.
Thank you. You too.
Absolutely, you guys did. My budget didn't change too much. The biggest, the biggest item that you're going to see is actually in our dues and membership. And how the dues and membership increase came about is the state camera, which is my appraisal system, is under a change of guard, if you will. So what they have done is they've gone out to a vendor service. The state used to pay a portion of my state camera appraisal system's budget, and then our dues paid the remainder. That's all changed. When the new administration came in, they said, "We're not funding this program anymore. You're going to stand on your own." What that ends up doing is we have to raise the dues, and we're in the highest tier. The way this company works, it's called the CSC, Community Consortium Association. How it works, it goes by tiers. So by it going by tiers, we have over 5,000 parcels, so we're in the highest. There's nine communities total in Tier One. With that being said, my dues are now $3,550, as opposed to last year where it was $2,300. The year before, in 2015, it went up $100, so it was $2,200. So that's, that's the bulk of, of my increase. I did go up a little bit in postage, such as Mary Ann did too. Our stamps did go up a little bit on office supplies, and that's it.
Board members, questions? I have a, just some questions as it relates to abatements.
Sure.
So in your report, rev. 2011 had 157 abatements, and then 12 was 57, 13 was 67. Are these requests for abatements or...
Right, these are taxpayer requests that actually file a state tax 128, which is for them to see if we're going to abate their, their property, reduce their value. This year, because at the time of turning this in in December, the abatement season actually ends February 7th. So I didn't have the numbers, obviously, for '16, but I can tell you, we have 36 abatement applications.
So that was my question. Are the numbers that you put in the report, are they applications or are they actual settlements?
Applications.
Applications, okay. And I noticed that there's a high number for the rev. year, and we've got a rev. year coming up next year.
This year, 17, correct.
So you don't report on how many you've had, how many are settled?
You know, Bob, I could give you that. I do, I mean, I can't tell you specifically parcels, but I could give you the number of settled abatements.
Well, I gather what happens is you get them, they're reviewed, and they're either...
I inspect them.
Approved or denied.
Correct.
And then those that are denied, people have a right to go to the appellate tax board.
Absolutely.
How many appellate tax board cases do we have?
We currently have one, and the Verizon case, which is a 2010 case, and we keep getting promised that they're going to settle this case, and I'm not sure when. But we only have one ATB or appellate tax board case pending with a docket number, which is very good.
So it would be useful to know just, you know, historically what happens to the abatements. How many are approved, how many are denied, and then what's outstanding at the appellate tax. Obviously, we're well aware of the Verizon one, it's been there for several years.
That's become like a chronic. I can add that, that's not a problem.
That would, that would be good. Board members, Steve, any questions? Finn, Calm? No questions? Do you have any other comments or anything?
I'm all set.
You're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I see Jean? Yes, Jean's here.
Evening.
Evening.
Hi, Jean.
Members of the board and finance committee, my name is Eugene Tork, manager of information systems, and I'm here to provide you with whatever information I can give you about the budget. Just wanted, can you hear me?
Listen.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
A couple of things I wanted to highlight about last year. It has to do mainly with some networking initiatives. We have, we have an email archiver that puts us in compliance with email retention regulations, and that archiver now serves both our exchange server and the exchange server that's at the police department. It's located at the police department, serves us both. It's an example of synergy of efficiencies, and I think we are moving ahead with, and we've had occasion to use that too. On the networking side, we have a barricada spam filter, and we will be, we have it in place. It's in audit mode now, but we'll be able to, in a very granular way, filter web traffic. And this is mainly for spam and not to control, although it could be used for that, not to control the users. For example, if you, you know, while you're on a website, a lot of times, there's a lot of background processes that take you to wherever, on different countries. And we have a geo-filter that blocks known countries, which you can't even go there as an example. This happened about three weeks ago. I was on a Microsoft site doing updates, and I had it blocked because it took me to Brazil for some reason. They're usually ads, and they're innocuous, but nonetheless, this web filter will give us better control over that and give us, just make our network safer. Our network is now exposed to, we provide internet service to Town Hall, Elder Services, Fire Department, if that is large. So it's getting larger, and we just need to have that protected. So we have that in place. It's a highlight. We migrated the Fire Department domain, the network, the Windows networking domain to the network we have here, so we are all on one network now. And this kind, this, this item actually straddles two years, but we have a DPW help desk system, which is used prodigiously a lot, and helps to manage the DPW help desk or help tickets. And they used it quite efficiently, and I thought they organized it by different categories so they can get better reporting and manage. New, our facility superintendent, Julie Spernight, is a, is an active user of that, and I think if anything, this is going to flourish even more. Looking ahead to next year, we have, there's more on the capital side, we'll have to shore up our backbone, networking, our network backbone to handle voice-over-IP and some of the traffic we have. That's mainly we're upgrading our switches we have here and the nodes of our INET. There are other things, but those are the highlights. Glad to entertain, oh, the, the changes I, to the budget really are in two, two line items. The first line item is the $1,320, and that's a $110 a month increase. We plan to increase our ISP service level from 25 megabits down to 100 because we were providing a website in the form of our ESS server and our ESS techs, employee self-service website, our citizen self-service website where people can come in and pay their bills or check their taxes, whatever they need to do. So we're getting more and more, providing 24/7 service to our internal website, our community self-service. So that's, that $1,320 is the web, is the service level for our internet service provider. The other item falls under 53030, which is professional services, data processing. That's a combination of three items. Increase from our Munis application and our Munis annual licenses, licensing support, and our OSDBA, which is their operating system and database administration, which they provide, in my opinion, really good service. But anyway, that's, and then the other two are, that's $3,500 of the 79. $2,100 is for an upcoming, I didn't, we didn't increase, had this a couple of years ago, our virtualized server environment. I have an annual subscription, and we purchased it in three years, and I didn't add that amount to the annual amount, so that's $2,100 there. And the other item is $2,300 for, we're looking to upgrade our firewall, which is the nexus of all traffic coming in from the outside. It manages security and routing for all the traffic coming in. One of the things that we're looking to do is have what's called, and I don't want to get too technical with DPIs, deep packet inspection. We all have secure connections, one node to the other. It works great. But what happens if you have tainted traffic coming down the middle? There's no one, there's no way to see it unless you have deep packet inspection, and that's a matter of disassembling, the firewall disassemble the stream inspected or bad stuff in the form of viruses or any, any known, anything that should be blocked. Then it reassembles it, pushes it off. There's, there's a push for that, and that's, and another reason we need to upgrade our firewall, it has to do with our throughput. If we upgrade our internet service level from 25 megabits to 150, there's a threshold right now of 100 on the firewall, and that's just the nature of the firewall. So we'll need to upgrade that also. So it's those three items, the biggest one is Munis, $3,500. The virtualized server environment, $2,100 annual subscription, and the firewall upgraded, $2,300 for 79. And that is, those two items are the changes for next year.
Munis, go ahead.
Yes.
Mr. Steel?
Yes. I didn't want to interrupt you before, but you mentioned you had a $2,100 figure that you did not add in. Did I misunderstand that, or it's not in here? Is that what you're saying?
2014, we procured a virtualized server environment, and that came with an annual subscription of $2,100. So it would be an ongoing amount that we have, that we have to include in our, and I, I didn't, I forgot to at the time.
Okay, so it's, it's not in this, in this budget? Is that what you're saying? Okay.
It should have been added actually.
Isn't it the $9,000 increase?
Part of the $9,300, right?
The $9,200 increase?
Or $9,200.
I think, I think you're saying it isn't.
It's there.
It is?
It's there.
$7,900.
If you read the budget, it's in there.
Okay.
You were saying it wasn't in FY last year.
Oh, okay, okay. I was a little confused.
Anyone else?
Yeah, no, I did have another question. I guess the big concern I think we all have is, you know, are our systems safe? You know, I, I'm not an expert in the, in the area of IT or anything like that, but there is this thing called ransomware, and I'm sure, Bob, you're very familiar with it too. You know, and I look at the numbers, you know, I honestly don't know as a citizen whether are we taking the necessary steps? Are we ahead of the game as far as protecting our technology infrastructure, so to speak? Are we there, or are we trying to get there? Because I think a lot of towns are vulnerable at this point, and I, you know, we haven't had a problem, is that correct? Or have we?
We've, we've been very, very fortunate, and I think it's two things. First of all, we are protected, but I've got to add, you're never 100% protected. I don't even know if you're 90% protected. That's, it's a moving target. There's changing things all the time, so we have to have some kind of subscription service that gives you these updates every, daily. We haven't had an incident. I'm largely, because we are prepared, but the most important, believe it or not, is the users. They're vigilant, they're aware. They send us stuff all the time, and they say, "What about this?" And things get through, and they, they're very, they become very clever at snagging you. And it looks official, it looks like it's from a bank, it looks like it's an invoice, it looks like it's from the IRS, and your reaction is to click on it. And so we, it's, to answer your question, we haven't had incidents. Are we there? Never there completely, but we are on track. We need to do this on a regular basis to keep up.
Is there anything that you are aware of that you think we should be doing that we're not?
Probably is. I can't, it doesn't come to mind right, that we should be doing that we're not in areas of, of security?
Well, in security and procedures to make sure that everything is secure and so on.
Well, I, I got to be careful. I can't say too much about our security paradigm in a public setting like this.
I understand.
But it is, it's a layered approach. You have multiple layers that you intercept.
You don't have to go through the details. I just, I don't want to expose us in any, any way, but...
I think we have a good, a good, and that comes from feedback from others that have seen this and have worked elsewhere and worked here, and they, they've told us that, you set up seems to work really well compared to other sites that they're on. Never say never, and you know, you've got to be humble about this. This business will keep you humble. This business will keep you humble. You will be, the moment you say you've got it, it'll, you'll, you'll, an incident will happen. It's constant vigilance and trying to keep up with the newer technology. We subscribe to CERT and other services that, this is from Carnegie Mellon, that provides us daily updates on, on bad things out there, but also trends. And trying to keep up with it is a challenge, and so I think we have good people, we have good support. This is a good environment to work in, and we're, we're doing okay.
It's good to know.
Thank you.
And Con.
Yes?
What's in the fifteen K for facilities capital?
That will probably, that's probably a lot to do with our, well, Ms. Lays, is our switches I alluded to, the network switches. It will take that much, or about that much, to get that done.
Isn't the narrative on eighty-eighty-seven associated with that? Age eighty-seven, under small capital projects? Is that what captures that money?
Yes. That, that's it, yes. I'm sorry, about that, that was the last part, the last part of that.
Is that, is that what you were looking for?
Yes.
Were you planning on doing that through twenty sixteen period?
I guess. Twenty sixteen?
Those are items that don't meet the capital, except that there is always a capital request for continued refurbishment of computers and things like that. I think he's talking about network switches and small, small gear that add up over the most of the year, which leads to a question.
I just wanted to note too, it also includes the iPads for the board selecting that are going to be deployed this evening, iPads for the TDC board members, so that is what qualifies as a small capital, yes.
Gene, and a few weeks ago, there was an issue related to a file search, and I know it, it related into kind of a domino effect on a few things. But I think during the discussions, there was network gear and things that the backup, battery backup either failed or something. Has that been resolved?
It's being resolved right now. I have a quote, and I have an order in, I don't have.
So that's coming out of this year's budget?
Yes. And that's just with server rack.
Kate?
I just have a couple of questions for you. In your, in your personal services, you say, you identify that in your, you know, the last page here. Do you actually have a GIS coordinator right now?
No, we did advertise and interview, and it just didn't. There was no one that really qualified for, we had a split position as GIS and part-time IC. We either had one or the other. There's, there's no one, no, there wasn't anyone that met the terms, so we're going to re-advertise and, with a GIS coordinator.
Okay. And in your personal, in your purchase of services, I had just a couple of questions. I think I understood, I was a little bit confused too, so I think I understood when you explained it, and it's on your, it's on your first page, but you have license with Munis and support with Munis?
Yes.
And does that include training of staff?
Um, no.
It would, it wouldn't?
It does not.
That's just a Munis support contract?
Looking at the training of staff. I do for training.
Oh, okay. So they don't come in and help with that kind of support service?
Not unless it's a new module.
Okay. And I wanted to ask you about, you mentioned the initiative, the two-year-old initiative with the telephone, the DPW help desk, I guess, or what is that? What is the particular program called? See, click, fix, or help desk?
A help desk, it's just, it's a, it's an order, a ticket ordering and management system where people email in their service request, whether it be, you know, their.
Pothole, or trees.
Right now, right now, it's internal.
What, so you mean members of the public can't do this?
Right, right now, we keep, we're internal, until they want to move forward with it. It's designed more for an internal, managing an internal group. But it could be used externally, but we might have to look at. We'd have to review our software to see if that would work as well, I'm not sure.
Okay, so, so that's an internal program that you are using?
Yes.
That's something new that you?
No, actually, we have two. We have an IT help desk, anything, things related to networking, Munis or applications or your computers, comes to the, our help desk. We, actually Brian Carter, my associate, did a great job of adapting, took that in it, and reconfigured it to work on, in a DPW environment. We have a different, it's basically the same thing, but it's, they have a different, a different model and different data. The system is designed for discovery too, like for the IT part, it goes out and it interrogates the printers and tells us how much toner we have left and things like that. DPW doesn't need that, so we took that out and left the, the tracking part for them to use.
So what are you, what are you tracking on the DPW portion of things through this system?
Virtually anything, whether you, I think the first ticket was, and I don't see it because the DPW handles it, I say, we don't see it because the DPW handles it. The only thing we might see is that if they CC us. The ticket goes to them, the program runs on the, on the DPW server, and so they, they handle the whole thing. I think the first ticket had to do with somebody had, they had ants in the bathroom or something like that, something that was, you wouldn't think of it, but a legitimate complaint, we have some problems here. And it could be, who knows, it's just anything to do with ticket ordering. I think they use it to, to manage some of their, some of the jobs, the projects they have. I'm not that close to it. It was the DPW director and that staff that handled it.
I was just curious if you could, if you could produce some analytics regarding that? Can you do that, or do you have to go back to DPW director to produce, you know, what were the results of all that?
I think my associate can, Brian, because I know, I know he can, because he's done it for them in the past.
Michael, you want to comment on that?
Sure. As Gene identified, we have an internal work order system for information technology-related needs, which by, by virtual definition is internal and for employees to use. As a means to try to assist the previous building superintendent with managing workload, the DPW director had spoken with information technology, and I believe with the finance director, and they had developed this as a tool to try to manage the workload as it related to needs at the town buildings. And it expanded slightly beyond the town buildings, but again, for internal purposes only. I think it is something that you can expect, that we'll be looking at. If not through this particular program, then through other means to manage external submission of work and the management of the workload in, to the Department of Public Works in particular.
Catherine, you also?
No, just a large sum, that I was just trying to understand that.
No, are you also?
Yeah.
Anyone else? Ben Con.
Just want to thank you. On the website, it looks great. I think you guys have done a great job on executing the new website, and I'm happy to see that you're going to be continuing, have a focus on the maintenance of it. I really think it's great from the town's perspective, user-friendly, so, thank you.
I'll, I'll accept that from all the users and all the, all our.
All the department heads deserve credit.
That site has really flourished. There's a ton of data, it's, and it's to their credit.
Well, and it's up to date, which is huge, so.
Up to date, it is user-friendly, and I've been recently going on a lot of other town websites, not as fine-tuned as ours, as Gene.
Past years, I've been very hard on this issue, and it's just nice to sit here and be able to say, thank you for doing such a nice website. And I know it's not just you. I know it's a team effort across the board, but you give them the ones and zeros to run it, so it works.
Well, thank you, thank you for them, and I'll, I'll make it a point, it's the first thing that's said at our next department meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Finance and accounting?
So if we start with the finance section of my budget, basically the finance division is just comprised of the assistant finance director as well as the finance director stipend. So there's minimal change that takes place in that division's budget. And then if we are set to move on to accounting?
I'm going to let it go. You and I had a discussion off the record on this, outside the meeting, but this isn't the budget that we were supposed to see this year, but I'm hoping you and the town administrator will, at some point.
Yes.
Come to, you know, what's the real vision for the department and where we're going. So I'm a little disappointed what I'm looking at tonight, but I understand it, and I can appreciate it, that you guys, the level of effort you're working under right now, so.
Thank you. I mean, we are, you know, in discussions and, you know, are evaluating it, so I appreciate that.
No problem, no. You guys still do a great job, and I like to see it evolve.
Questions on the finance portion of the budget? Ben Con?
Yes, Dan.
Yeah, Liz, are there any particular upgrades or improvements planned for two thousand seventeen on the annual account?
Anyone on the board?
Okay, so accounting?
Yes.
Okay. So again, in the accounting budget, the increases, the first increase of the personal services are contractual, and then the other increase that is over FY sixteen in my budget would be for training and education. And as the treasurer collector mentioned, the Munis conference will be in Boston in April of twenty seventeen, so we hope to send, I hope to send my assistant as well as my administrative assistant who handles accounts payable and my new accounting analyst to the conference, whether it's for one day or all three of the days. I've been, you know, each year since two thousand and twelve, and I find it very useful. You're learning, you know, new updates that they're going to come out with, and you learn, you know, different ways to do things that you didn't know were possible in the system from, whether it's other users or, you know, attending a forum or what have you. So it is a useful conference to attend, and where it's in Boston and limited travel, I feel that it's a good opportunity for the staff to go to.
Questions?
You can curve.
I do, yes. I can tell you, having it right in our backyard, it's financially advantageous to us to take advantage of it in this form.
Ben Con?
No questions.
No, I just had a question on the clerical part? The one FTE, you have two one FTEs? Is it really just one FTE?
Nope, so under, well, clerical is one FTE, and then the other one FTE is the accounting analyst that was added, which comes under, that should come under non-union. So for clerical, you may see on the breakdown page of the one FTE, it was the portion of the salary that isn't subject to the step increase, and then the second line on the salary page, so the step increase is the remaining part of the year, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, so it's not two different FTEs, it's one FTE altogether?
Yes, but it's just splitting it out, because part of the year is based upon today's rates, and then the remaining part of the year is based on the new rate.
Got it, okay. Yeah, so I just don't add up those FTEs in that column. It would be four, but you're saying it's only three.
Right, there's three in the accounting, including me.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Yeah, I believe I asked this question before, the difference between the union wages and the clerical. Clerical are union employees?
Yes.
Okay. And again, and I noticed this on elder services as well, I mean, if they're union, and I know they're clerical at the same time, I get that, but for transparency reasons, it would seem to me that if they're union wages or union employees, that they should be on that line five one one two O, as should everybody.
As should everybody?
As should everybody that is in that, in that category. You have your clerical, they're all union, and then you have union wages, you're showing that we have no union wages, so.
It's really just how the budget form is set up. You know, the clerical, the administrative union in North Reading goes by the clerical union, however, that's not their official term. So it's just always been that way. We can look into changing it.
I mean, is it, is it really a hard thing, or am I, am I being unreasonable, I guess?
Michael?
No, I think that the, I understand the question. I think it came up at the last budget meeting as well with regard to, I think it was the library.
The library.
I think what, the reason of the presentation is where it is, how it is, is because of the wide scope of departments that are impacted, that we're trying to fit into a format that works for everybody. So for example, if you look at the police department, that clerical line item would be a separate non-uniform person, same for the fire department, it would be a separate non-uniform person. In this instance, there are no non-clerical union employee, union employees in the department, so it's left blank. But I think that the format is part and parcel to having a template that fits each department, and I think that's why it's presented in the way that it is. I certainly defer to Liz further on that, but this is an example. If we were to take the clerical staff and put it into the union line, for example, it wouldn't be accurate in the fire department budget, for example, because uniform personnel show up in the, the union line for the fire department, for example.
Michael?
Can I make a suggestion?
I don't know if that provides clarification or not, but.
Rather not change in the format at all, but maybe this will satisfy Mr. Yule's request is in the object narrative, if you could just add union wages next to clerical, and I think that's pretty clear, right? So we don't have to go make a big format change on this. I think that's something you can do fairly relatively easy.
Yes.
Without changing numbers, without changing formats, and we're good.
Yep, that would be very easy, so. But just to Mr. Gilberto's point, you know, in the police department and the fire department, there are clerical union employees that work in those departments, so that probably was one of the reasons way back when, whenever this template was set up, was to segregate them out because they're not part of, you know, the fire union or the police union. So it's the same thing with the police lieutenants. Their salaries actually come under non-union wages, even though they are a union, but they're not part of the patrol sergeants' union. So it's just a way of segregating it, and we're limited to, in the payroll system, to breaking it out that way, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael.
Any other questions on the board?
It's a good, good suggestion, no? It's good that you brought it up.
Finance committee? Thank you, Liz. Town clerk? Town clerk, okay.
When you're ready, Barbara.
Good evening, everybody. Just briefly, there is three people in the town clerk's office, myself and two full-time staff, and we handle all of the workflows between the regular records division and the elections in town meeting divisions. So, that's the staffing at the office. In addition, there is about seventy plus or minus election workers that are considered seasonal temporary workers to run the elections and assist the town meeting check-in. So, that's the staffing. There's no changes in that, of course. I'm gonna jump into the elections budget first, if that's okay with everyone, because that really has the biggest impact on my budget this year. I've been forecasting for a couple of years about the changes coming due to the election reform bill, which did pass in 2014 and brought with it several changes that will impact this budget. It begins with this year. The biggest change that we will experience is with early voting coming in the November state election. And it will be carried forward every state election going forward, every biennial election. So, that will require, it's similar to absentee voting, but separate. Both will be running somewhat simultaneously during similar timeframes, but have slightly different impacts. The early voting is basically no excuse absentee voting. To vote absentee, you have to have a reason under the law. You're going to be absent from the city or town during the hours that polling will take place. You're going to be out of state or out of the country. So, you have to have a reason under the law. But early voting will allow anybody to vote in a two-week period prior to the state election during the regular office hours that the town clerk's office is open. It requires separate staffing from the town clerk's office, a separate location, and separate ballots, separate applications, separate processing and handling. So, that is the biggest impact for the office and the elections budget going forward. It will take place for the two full weeks prior to each November election going forward. So, it begins on the eleventh day before the election and ends the Friday before the election. I'm gearing on having the mailroom as the location spot for early voting, so it's very convenient. It's right next to our office and we can assist with it. It would be staffed by election workers, seasoned, knowledgeable election workers, but we have an adjoining door, so we're always there as a resource. I, we just received the draft regulations from the secretary of state's office, so they were not prepared when we were, when I was getting my budget ready. But pretty much what we were made aware of does exist in them. So, my budget includes the staffing for the early voting period, which is an increase of about $4,000 total to cover that period, that two-week period, and have full-time staffing for, I'm thinking of two election workers for a morning shift and then two for an afternoon shift to give a full eight hours coverage for each day. And then, we are, of course, anticipating additional police details for the election itself and traffic details to assist us with the, you know, coming in and out of the one location at St. Teresa's Church. One of the things written about early voting is that it doesn't necessarily reduce or increase the amount of voting that takes place on the election day, but lessens the amount of traffic on the day itself. So, it may not even increase voter activity because we do experience a very high level of voter activity on such an election when we're electing a president. But it might help to alleviate some of the traffic congestion that we had four years ago, where the traffic was all the way down to 62. So, that might be a plus for it, you know, as far as meeting the lines and the waiting times for people when they get to the polls. But it will also entail extra notification to voters to advertise, so that's factored into the budget. And, as I said, sufficient staffing. And right now, what I have started with, as I said, is two election workers to handle a morning and two in an afternoon, but we're going to have to see how that fluctuates. If we find that the early voting entails a higher level of volume than anticipated, then I might need to have more election workers assist with that process. It's going to require basically the same processing as absentee voting. An applicant will have to fill out an application, they get an envelope to seal their ballot in, check off on a voting list, much like at the polls. So, it's, it's just an auxiliary voting process, really, to supplement the election day. It's only a requirement for the state election, so it doesn't take place for annual town elections, primaries or special elections. It's just geared towards the biennial state elections. In addition to the voting in person, it's also can be done, people can request to vote early by mail as well, so much like absentee voting. They can request the ballot to be sent to them and then they would return it by mail. Yet, there's a different deadline from absentee voting. They do run concurrently for that two-week period, but absentee voting actually will start about a week earlier and end a half day later. So, that's the biggest impact on the elections budget, so I'll entertain any questions on that part.
I gather the state's not providing any funding for this, huh?
To date, we haven't received any word, although we already did the auditor's office already on this because, you know, we're, we wanted to be looked at as an unfunded mandate, of course. Until the regulations were released, which was only two weeks ago, there was nothing for them to really look at. So, they're taking a cursory look at it now. Once the regulations are finalized, then they will do a detailed examination of it to see if any of it will be considered unfunded mandates and reimbursable to cities and towns. I'm not fully expecting that. It doesn't appear that the secretary of state is sympathetic that way to, you know, assisting us in that venue, but everything is on the table right now. So, one or another, we have to fund it upfront and we can only hope for the best and, and hope for reimbursements down the road.
Why can't you set aside a voting machine?
Well, because the laws don't allow that. Okay, so everything is handled in paper format. The one exception is that in the regulations, we can designate the town clerk's office as a central tabulation center for the end of the night on election night and at least run those ballots through the machine and run a tape after eight o'clock. So, those can be tabulated in a central tabulation center, namely the town clerk's office, rather than being transported to the bowls, which, polls, which all of the absentee ballots have to do and get run through that. That being said, that's my intention and hoping that I don't need my spare machine at the polls if one of the machines breaks down. If that happens, then all the ballots have to go to the polls to be tabulated there. But the use of a voting machine, no tabulation of any ballots takes place until after eight o'clock on the night of the election. So, until then, there's no key switched, you know, no tapes run, and the ballots would have to be secured every night in the vault, you know, that, that we run the election.
Mr. Yule?
Yes, I have a few questions, Barbara.
I'm sure you do.
Just to clarify, you mentioned that it's two weeks, the early voting is two weeks, but it's really ten business days, correct?
Correct.
Just to clarify that for the public.
That is correct.
It's not fourteen days that some people might-
No, no.
...interpret that. Okay, that's what I thought. The other thing is during the, during election day, okay, do you plan on using your regular staffing that you normally do versus anticipating less and having less there?
Oh, no, I'm planning on a regular staffing. That day will be busy no matter what, you know. Even at this last primary, we had, I think it was fifty, fifty-eight percent or so, sixty percent. It was a very, very high busy day. The last presidential election, we were somewhere around ninety percent. You know, I think some of that, well, will be alleviated by the early voting, you know, giving people the opportunity to take advantage of that.
Right.
But I still anticipate a very active day at the polls.
Right. I would think so. I think elsewhere, on the court reading, where they thought they had so many early voting returns that they decided to cut back on, on polling sites. We only have one, but yeah.
Where we've never gone through a staff cycle before, I think it would not be prudent to try to cut back on staff on the polls. You really have to be ready for the worst-case scenario, if you will, or the best-case scenario of a high voter turnout. You know, so I'm not changing that at all.
Yeah, that would make, make sense.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
On the absentee voting, they used to be processed late in case someone decides to vote during the day, even though they submitted absentee. Is the same situation approved for the early voting?
No, no, it's not. Once somebody votes early, that's it. You are correct.
Can't vote early at all.
Absentee voting, if we haven't processed those ballots at the polls and that person was student away at school and was coming home and they wanted to go to the polls and vote in person, as long as that absentee ballot had not been taken to the polls, checked in, checked out, and the ballot run through the machine, that voter still had the opportunity to vote in person and the absentee ballot then would not be counted. But with early voting, that's off the table. Once a voter votes early, the voting list is marked as an early voter and that ballot is technically casted, sitting in the vault, and the voter cannot go in person to vote.
Any other questions for Barbara?
She does such a good job. What's there to ask?
Just one question from many, many people that ask, why no stickers?
I knew you were going to ask that, Mr. Cristo. And as I told you before, the worst downfall of the stickers is that people don't want them. They just discard them as they're leaving. And I brought you, this is like the "don't enter" sign from the rear door, and this is what it looks like in the back, where people leave their stickers behind. They end up on here with layers and layers and layers. But it doesn't just end here. This is on a window, and it's on the window, and it's on the signs going out, and papers on the floor, and stickers on the floor. We don't have time to clean it up. And it's, it was dropped several years ago because of budget cuts, basically. We were told to cut wherever we could, and that's what happened. But after a while, it was, it became-
A relief.
Really, almost a blessing because there was less cleanup to do and it's not fair to leave that for the church now that we've got more, more precincts at the church. And I agree with you. It's a nice visible sign. I don't disagree with that. But they're plastered on every sign that we have at the church.
Okay. I would ask the asking.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
Any other questions?
Just getting back, just getting back to the unfunded mandate. Is it the clerk association that's actually petitioning-
Yes.
...the auditor's office for that?
Yes, the town clerk's association. So, we've been in discussion with Suzanne Bump already, before this even got enacted, you know, so that she would have her radar up on it. And, you know, of course, we're going to hope for the best, but this affects every city and town in the Commonwealth.
Yeah.
And I don't know what's in state budget for, for this process, but they, they'll be looking at all aspects of it and determining whether or not-
I don't know how they come to any determination that it isn't an unfunded, I don't know how they come to any determination that it is not an unfunded mandate.
But then don't we all work under, all of our departments work under so many unfunded mandates, you know, that we have?
But that doesn't mean they should be a norm.
Yeah, very good.
Any other questions?
Election-related questions? For the records budget, some of the impacts on the records budget are really due to the elections still. The advertising includes, as I said, the extra notices, not only for early voting, which we're required to have. We need to do an extra notice to notify people when early voting will take place about two weeks before, that's determined, and then one time during the process as well. And in addition to that, we have three elections under this budget, so that impacts both the regular elections budget, but the advertising too for the election notices that will be placed for each of those elections. So, that's the increase under advertising. There's only, the discussion I had with Mike Dincon, representative of advertising, only appears one place in my budget, is under the records division. So, that's, that's why that carries the election notice as well. The increase in professional services, you may have noticed, it has to do with code book supplementation process. That increased dramatically. I had budgeted last year fifteen hundred dollars and my actual expenditure last year was thirty-five hundred under that. So, I had increased that from fifteen hundred to three thousand. It is a tedious process, you know, but it's very thorough and I have great confidence in the company. And, you know, it's a fluid process where I send them all of the items that have passed a town meeting or mass general law that we've accepted and they forward the proof to me and I review it and it goes back to them and then we do the supplementation and get the changes in place and distribute the same. Any questions on that? That's something that we really never know what the cost will be because it just depends on what shows up on the town meeting warrant. If the more changes to the code book, the more cost, you know, is affected on that, that line item. And printing has increased slightly because we go through a tremendous amount of envelopes during a busy year like this. So, you know, we just order those with regular office supplies. But every time there's a voter registration, a change in any voter status, whether it's changing the party, changing an address, deleting a voter, acknowledging the voter, it all has to be acknowledged with a first-class mailing to that voter. So, that increases dramatically with this type of election year, between the three elections and the presidential election. We also, online voter registration was implemented under the new ethics reform bill. So, we are getting a tremendous amount of voter registrations online through our state voter registration system, where people just can go online right from their home computer, their tablet, and register directly online and it gets sent right to us directly. So, that has increased, that's really taken over from what used to be a high level of voting from the registry of motor vehicles. Now, we're seeing that online voter registration is our highest level of method used, found more than anybody even walking into our office anymore. We really very rarely see lines anymore. And the postage item here is the mailroom cost, and that's where our absentee voter notices and absentee ballots are mailed. That's the line item that those go out on is the postage machine. So, that's why that's not included in the postage under elections. Does anyone have any questions on that?
Questions?
And I think everything else is pre-status quo for the regular budget. I did put in a request for small capital, and that's just to replace the office furniture. It would cover, hopefully, the three desks in the office with the computer extension tables. And if there's any extra money than that, then we can always use the file cabinet or something like that. But the furniture that's in there is-
Chair from chairs for us to-
Chair? For you, in my budget?
Yeah.
You're richer than I am. But the furniture that we have in there is eighteen years old and very dated and laminated, keeling, and so it's really time for replacement.
Maybe get somebody to sneak some chairs and put it for us.
Are there any-
Questions, anybody on records budget? I guess not, Barbara.
Thanks, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara.
Board of health, and I just think, well, there's just four. Board of Health, I just think, it's just...
How are you? Sure, yeah, come right up.
That could result in like a five percent cut.
Yep, it's a reduction.
Budget down?
Is this not in here already?
No.
Really?
It's all listed.
No, no, I guess not. There's all this stuff in there.
Excuse me, can I ask one question?
Yeah.
How much of this is in our packet that was provided in the budget already?
Just a portion of it. What I gave you, if I just might take thirty seconds just to explain, it's for more of your leisurely reading. But I just wanted to give you an extended Board of Health annual report, just to kind of show some accountability transparency of what we're doing with the Board of Health Department. And in that packet that you have in front of you is just basically Board of Health mission statement, breakdown of the members and the staff and Board of Health structure, and basically with the Board of Health mission statement and glances moving forward. The rationale for this package is just basically to inform and educate the power of Board of Selectment and the residents of North Reading on, you know, what the Board of Health does, what our mandates are. And it just kind of gives a breakdown in there with also, you know, an expanded breakdown of permits issued, reviewed inspections and complaints, a breakdown in a percentage of each, so that you can see what we've done over the last year to give the Board of Selectment a better understanding of what we're doing and what we've done, and also our FY16 accomplishments and FY17 objectives and goals moving forward. So I just wanted to give that to you and the Finance Director moving forward, just to, you know, something for you guys to review moving forward.
Thank you.
I think now would be an appropriate time to perhaps just give us an overview of the budget.
Yeah.
And then maybe if you want to focus on the line item detail changes after a brief overview.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. This is a different format for me. Do I apologize?
Oh. This is your first time doing this one, right?
Yes.
Oh, well, I forgot that, yeah.
Yeah, so I apologize.
Oh, don't apologize.
I seem a little out of place.
I forgot.
So I think what we requested was, I think that there was a line item deduction in the cellphone where the agent I was able to get a cellphone through the coalition. I think the other thing was that the travel was put back into another line item for the town vehicle. And I think pretty much everything else was, we requested a level funded budget.
Mr. Gilver.
I'm going to ask the Finance Director to offer us some explanation, but we made a reduction to the Board of Health budget for fiscal year sixteen, this current year at the October town meeting, to reflect some changes. I know that there's somewhat of a description that could be offered to explain what's going on, because if you look, it shows an increase over FY16 of about seven thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars probably. But there was a reduction that was made, I don't remember the dollar amount.
Sure. So at October town meeting, at fall town meeting, we made an adjustment to the personal services line as Mr. Bracy did not come on board until August 31st, and the previous Board of Health Director had retired. So there was a month lag, as well as a difference in the salary that the previous agent was making versus Mr. Bracy. So that is what accounts for the majority of the seven thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollar entries in personal services. And we also, like Mr. Bracy said, we took the travel funds at October town meeting and put them into the fuel vehicle pool bucket, and we had left a small budget number there for incidental mileage in the meantime for Mr. Bracy until he had a town issued vehicle. So those are...
Any questions for Mr. Bracy?
Mr. Chairman, just one other thing I could ask. So with Mr. Bracy, there's been kind of a change in some of the services that we're providing through Town Voice, particularly yourself, versus contracted services that's taken place. Could you just offer a bit of an overview for the Board and for the Finance Committee as well?
So what we did was we took the service contract that we were utilizing for food inspections, and we utilize that now for plan review for Title V. So in a sense, I'll continue to do the food inspection since I've already built a foundation and establishment with the establishment here at the town, and we will be utilizing a consultant to do Title V plan review. This was going to enable us, which we've already started to do, is to kind of build on a community health program for residents in North Reading, which we started to do with some of the programs that we've started to put in place. So that's really how we can...
And that's no change from when Mr. Bracy first came on board? That was the plan?
That's correct, yes. But it is a change, and now it appears in the budget versus it wasn't in the budget at the time. It was approved for FY16.
So since this is your first time around, sometimes it's very helpful for the Board to, you know, not necessarily that we want to go through this, but maybe a summary of some of the highlights would be useful.
Would you like...
We don't have to do that tonight.
Oh, okay.
Unless you want to.
Well, I can speak briefly if you have the time.
Sure.
Well, some of the things that we've done since I've been on board is we've started to, again, like I said, build up a community health program. One of the things that we've done is we've built an interactive Board of Health website to, again, inform and educate and empower the residents of North Reading, in that we have multiple links to, again, educate the community on community health issues, community health, healthy North Reading. There's some links on there for residents on that. Community sanitation, environmental health, food protection, emergency preparedness in Title V links. That now residents and business, the community can go onto the website, they can ascertain this information. Some of the other things that we've recently done, as far as last Saturday, we had a choking class for the business community for all the restaurants, and we're all welcome to come. We have two other additional classes that are coming up, a food protection manager class, which is coming up May 18th. And we're also providing a session for the North Reading residents on mosquito and tick control for the spring. That will be May 18th. So residents can come in, get an informative session on tick-borne diseases, mosquitoes, what they can and can't do on their properties. Another thing that I believe the Board of Selectmen are aware of, we're working in conjunction with the Attorney General's Office to clean up some of these properties that are uninhabitable and abandoned. We're working with our food protection program to become FDA standardized for the community. And we're also going to be partnering with the local business community to help assist with the influenza clinics this fall. We also, a couple of other things that we've done recently is we've restructured our Board of Health restructure to help and accommodate local organizations, churches and schools. As we see, we're getting a lot more community events going on here in the town. So we're working on that, and we've drafted some new Board of Health regulations, well, they're drafted but not been approved yet, to coincide with those new fee structures, support festivals, events, and things like that. So we're working diligently to move the community in a different direction.
Mr. Teal.
Yes. Mr. Bracy, let me thank you for the, putting the Board of Health out in front for the public to see, for a place to go. The communication from your department has increased thousandfold since you've been on the position. You've communicated to the Board, and we've all received the emails and the information that we know you're active and there's a place to go. With regard to the program with the state regarding properties, you know, we just went through a process with one property, and it apparently has been, what, auctioned off?
Yes.
And, you know, I don't know how much of a part we played in that to get it to that. Maybe you can clarify that for me? I'm under the impression that, first of all, if it was only the way that we approached it made it happen, that's great all by itself, but perhaps you can extrapolate...
I think you know that the case has been going on for about a year, if not more, before I came on board. And once we got the Housing Initiative program involved with that, I think that expedited the process in getting that auction to happen sooner than later, which now a local builder has bought that property, I think a well-known builder in the community. So I think that we'll see that that property will get cleaned up and developed and back onto into the tax base of the community.
Well, I did speak with all the residents on that street, and they were extremely elated to know that it was taken care of and that the town did what it could. They knew that it's, you know, it's pretty bad, so they were very much elated to hear that it was, it's now resolved. And I think you can, you know, if there's stickers, you can put yourself a sticker there or a badge to say, okay, this is something I've done, I've taken care of it, and improved the community in a specific street. So thank you.
Mr. Cristo.
On page 188 of your budget, 188, that graphic?
Yes.
And it says FY15, FY16 Board of Health complaints, one hundred and ten. So is that combined over those two years?
I would say, yeah. It was kind of estimated based on what I could get prior to me coming here, what was actually logged on.
Okay, so it's one hundred and ten complaints over a two-year period?
I would take probably close to a year, maybe a little bit over a year.
So is there, what's the process for a complaint?
Well, obviously, a complaint has to be generated through either a written complaint, phone call, or email. The Board of Health would log that in now, and then we would go out and check the legitimacy of that complaint, to see if there's any merit for us to issue a citation or an order notice to correct.
And how many of those did you give up?
Order notices to correct since I've been here? Twenty-five or so, maybe, I would say.
All on the food service area?
No, no, you know, some land issues, some with food, some with just general nuisance complaints.
That'd be a nice graph, maybe, in the next year's budget, just to kind of see the magnitude of the things you have to deal with and put those out there. I know it's probably not very easy to get some people to be more reasonable when you get things done, so I just think it's a good stat for you to track.
Thank you.
But no, I think you've done a great job. The statistics and the graphs help a lot to understand the magnitude of what you're dealing with. Thank you.
Just in relation to the Title V, I think initially you were talking about going out to gain some more experience in certifications yourself to do it. Now we've changed tact a little bit, and will you contract those services?
Yeah, well, I'm certified to do it.
You're certified?
Yeah, I have my system inspected and my federal file. I just didn't have as much experience as Mr. Bear, my predecessor. We probably dealt with maybe twenty percent Title V community court as opposed to one hundred percent here. It just made more sense to have a plan reviewer because that takes a lot of the time with Title V. And I would still go out, which I currently do now, is I go out and I do the field inspections on top of the food inspections. And on top of that, we're starting to try to build out between myself and the Board of Health and the DHA, working to build a community health program for the residents.
So you're doing the site, you're still doing the review of the plans?
Yes.
Is that how it works?
Yes. And I'll go out, I'll do the site inspections. So I'll go out and do the purple, heat test, I'll do, you know, equipment inspection, excavation inspections, I'll go out and do all that.
Any other questions from the Board?
No.
Don?
Couple of questions. On the Title V, how much of the purchase services is represented by the contract for Title V? You've got a budget here of, and I guess with our mental health, it's about sixty-two thousand dollars. How much of that is...
Can you give a breakdown of that?
Yeah, I think that's a different line item.
Is it?
Yeah, I think that, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that's for the nurse, public health nurse. But I don't know, current mental health.
It's not the way it reads, but...
No, that would be in community health, I believe. The nurse would be in community health if I read it correctly. So I believe that environmental health would be the line that would apply both for the Title V examinations and for the food inspections. So that line, if I understand it correctly, would account for the Title V plan review and for part of the food inspections, the balance that Mr. Bracy did not...
He was doing the food inspection.
He does a portion of the food inspections. He does not do all.
Not all of them.
That's correct.
So this, the sixty-two thousand food inspections on Title V? What number is that?
Fifty-two thousand.
I have different...
It's in chart one, if you go to page 183 in the budget, and if you look at that spreadsheet...
183, budget book.
In the budget book, sorry. If you looked under your UMass Code 519, under environmental health, under purchase services, you requested sixty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars, right? Is that what your question was done?
I'm just curious, what the breakout is of this item, this big item, it was a contract number.
So the breakdown seems to be thirteen thousand two hundred for professional services, which would be for the site plan reviews, I'm assuming, for Title V. And then you have forty-eight thousand four sixty-two for mosquito control, a thousand dollars for injuries and animal control.
Okay, thank you.
Don?
Flu clinics used to be a big part of the activity of the health department. And I'm not clear just how many of those we're doing now, whether the number of people that this is up or down. And we set up a revolving account a couple of years ago to kind of capture the revenue and the expenses of that function. I just wondered where we are right now.
Well, generally, the numbers that have been told to me is right around three sixty a year, between three sixty and four hundred people that we vaccinate. So, yes, we use that revolving account to purchase vaccines, but the state doesn't allocate as much as we used to in the past. So we currently use that to purchase vaccines. We do get a small portion of reimbursement from insurance companies on a yearly basis, so we try to put that back into the revolving account. And we usually try to have about two clinics a season.
Do the nurses, the cost to the nurses who went to that revolving account as well?
The cost to pay the nurses comes out of that account.
You pay for a lot of people revolving.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I guess you may not have enough history on this. I'm just curious whether that three sixty to four hundred is trending up or down? I'm thinking with all of the availability of the CVSs and Walgreens of the world, that I would think that public health clinics, this may be telling down.
That's the average number that's been said to me, right around three fifty, four hundred a year. So I guess the point that's been said to me in the last couple of years is that around that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gilver.
I don't want to speak for the Board of Health or for Mr. Bracy, but I think that from my conversations with him, that's something that they're looking at. You know, the ability to get a flu vaccine is pretty widely available nowadays. So I know that that's something the Board is looking at for the upcoming flu season that we may hear more about.
Any other questions from Mr. Bracy? I'll just make a comment that also the CIT committee has added the Board of Health. He's represented on the committee, which I think is a very important step. be represented on the committee, which I think is a very important step associated with the drug situation in town. And not only in town, but everywhere.
Everywhere.
I think we're all set.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Service in effort. Last budget, with the exception of DPW, is administration.
Code enforcement.
What?
Code enforcement, CBA.
How could you forget?
You're okay, Bob.
Sorry.
Jim, you'll be okay with that?
Checked it off, all right, you're done.
Mine's two and a half percent. It's a no-brainer.
Nice brain. I apologize.
No southeast game tonight, right?
No.
You're not missing anything.
Yeah, zoning is down 26.2% from last year. That's due to personnel changes. The rest of that budget is level funding. There's no changes in that. Building is down 2.8%. And that's due to some line item changes, the new vehicle policy was a big part of that. And this year, we consolidated some of the budgets, the printing and the office supplies. We took out of electrical, plumbing and the ceiling, and we put it all in the building. It's just, it's a house cleaning thing. I want to do that with the training and education, too. It's easier to build to the system, the finance system. And the training, I found that trying to guess what each discipline's going to use, because the codebooks change, like the plumbing code might change every three years, different from the electrical code, and when that changes, there's more training that the inspectors have to go. So it's really hard to balance. So if it's all on the building, you know, I can control that better depending on which inspector has to go to train. Other than that, last year, the building permits were up 50%. Unfortunately, the fees were only up 5%. But in this year, the first three months, they're running 50% higher than last year. So there's a lot of, last year was due to the storms and all the repairs from the bad winter. And actually, they're still catching up. I've got projects that are a year from last year that people are still fixing roofs and leaks and everything else. Other than that, the other thing I wanted to bring to the board, I don't know if police or fire or anybody's mentioned this, about the town buying drones. Building department could use them to inspect roofs, chimneys. You know, I don't know if the fire department or police department have brought that up. Something to think about in the future. It certainly saves a lot of, you know, going, not that we go up on the roofs, but we can see it a lot clearly if we have drones. Just something to keep in mind in the future.
Mr. Priska.
If you had the drone, how many times do you think you could use it a year?
We probably do at least 100 roof permits.
Yeah.
You know, by themselves, so we definitely use it on every permit.
See, I know there's some people doing the outside services for that. You could hire that out. They come in, you give them the location, they go out there, they film it all for you, and then deliver you the CD.
Okay, yeah, I had looked at the.
Which maybe.
You know, the cost of that, some technical issues.
Actually, Al from Advanced Photo could probably give you some insight on that and maybe get some estimates for him for maybe a budget request for next year or even this year.
Okay.
You know, if you can fit it within your, in this budget.
Yeah, and if we have a permit on the site, we have permission to, you know, we can use the drone and go up over the roof and look, because permit gives us the right to inspect anything on the property while there's a building permit built there. So there wouldn't be a privacy issue.
I just think outside service should be considered for that kind of a idea.
Okay.
Mr. Teal.
Thank you. Would you use, would you only use it for roof permits or could you use it if you have any permits? Supposing somebody has, it's just doing their kitchen and they have a permit, would you still have the right to do, to look at the roof?
You mean for the?
With the drone?
The use of the drone?
Yeah. Would you, would you have the?
Yeah, I think it would have to be an exterior, something on the exterior of the property. If they were just doing a kitchen remodel, we wouldn't have the right to fly a drone over there.
Replacing a window or something, right. Drones can be scary things for different reasons, okay? So, I mean, I think functionally, you're saying if someone's doing a roof and you want to make sure that they did it right, it would be a perfect tool to use just for that.
Right, we couldn't use them for a zoning violation. We're only permitted to what we can see from ground level. We're not even permitted to go up on a ladder and look over somebody's fence for a zoning violation. So we wouldn't be able to use them to look in somebody's backyard and see what jumped they have there or anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, code enforcement? Michael, do you have any comments?
I just would recognize the building inspector for his assistance with regard to the receivership program as well. I know he's participated in many of the meetings and the referral of the properties to the Attorney General's Office. So thank you, Jim, for your help.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Go Celtics. Huh? Pretty good.
It's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, I'll just take them in order, starting at Town Council.
Okay.
And pretty straightforward, although the number certainly down here is basically going to be nothing. This request at $128,000 is intended to account for our regular Town Council services. It does not account for special council. It's a level at $128,000 to what we had appropriated for Town Council services in FY 16. $8,000 of that, if I have the number corrected, for water council services, the balance is going to go to water services. It's pretty straightforward.
Any questions regarding Town Council budget? FinCom?
Just the only note on the Selectance Budget, as we know, last year, we went through and tried to provide additional information relative to workload and to cover the costs associated with the board's participation in many events that come up over the course of any particular year. The only change that we're requesting here is a $50 increase, which would account for the projected increase in the annual dues for the town to be a member of the Mass Municipal Association.
I guess we could move on.
The Town Administrator's Budget. I'll just start with the expense-related items. Following, an increase of $5,575, which is the anticipated cost to replace in the aging coffee machine that's used by multiple departments here in the Town Hall. And a decrease of $1,500 would eliminate fiscal year 2017 funding for the Town Administrator to attend the International City County Management Association Annual Conference. The board was, the finance committee were willing to request this at Town Meeting, and I did attend for FY 16 in Seattle. I certainly found it to be a valuable experience, but not something that I'd be looking to attend for this current, this coming fiscal year. So I reduce that out of the budget in an amount of $1,500. And the final item that I will note is that I have a proposal here, proposal to change the way we provide staffing for human services, human resources and personnel-related matters in Town Hall. There is a request to restructure Human Resources Office to include a full-time Human Resources or Personnel Director and a 30-hour position dedicated to coordination of efforts. And that would be a change from the current staffing of one 35-hour person with responsibilities that run the gamut between those two items. And the goal would be to be able to identify somebody who's classically trained in human resources as a candidate to come in and assist us with this service. Again, as with many of the other things that are requested in this budget, it's a matter of reconciling the budget to balance out over the next few weeks prior to the recommendation being made at Town Meeting, but this is a proposal that I have submitted regarding this particular area. And I think it's something that we could benefit from.
Questions from the board? Mr. Priska?
So this is definitely one area, I think, in our town budgets that, from a scope and scale perspective, is probably most in need of additional support. There's no doubt about it. I've come to see you on this privately, but I definitely disagree with what you're proposing today. And I don't think we're going in the right direction with this kind of investment in these particular areas. I really think, you've got to step back and really look at the one year or the first full year you've been here. Been here, what, 18 months? How long have you been here?
18 months.
18 months, so even the 18-month period, Michael. You've been drinking from a fire hose since the minute you arrived here. And that is not a good thing. And the ops tempo around here is only increasing, it's not decreasing. For me, I think the better value for the town is that really you consider an assistant by Town Administrator. I just see all the revolving door that you have over there constantly, the flow of personnel issues coming on, and I understand that's probably why you want the HR person. But I think when you step back and you rethink it, I think you're better, money's better spent on an assistant Town Administrator than it is an HR person right now. And maybe that person can have some stronger skills in HR, which could assist our existing HR staff. And then maybe in the future, we can readdress the HR. I would say, I'd like you to reconsider this and transfer this money and become more of an assistant Town Administrator. That's my belief. So I wouldn't vote in favor of this if it comes, if we go to a vote, as I really just think we're missing the mark on it. And I don't mean to be disrespectful to you. I know this is your budget, you have to propose it, but I've sat here now six years to see what goes on out here in Town Hall. I'd ask you to just reconsider it. I'd like the board members to, you know, hear from them with their thoughts on it.
Catherine?
I don't usually do this, but I disagree with you on that. I think that TA's job responsibilities are somewhat related, but I think you need an HR director here to sort of handle all of the other stuff that is probably on your plate and should not be on your plate. And I haven't been on the board for that length of time, but you could see the definite need for a Human Resources Director that would answer to you and work for you and address whatever crises or non-crisises occur here. So I do think it's a good direction to take if we can afford it. That would be my thought.
Any other board members want to comment? Mr. Teal?
Yeah, it's an interesting point, I believe, that Michael brings up. When we look at the workload that has been thrust upon the TA, it makes one look into the idea of how we can create a release valve for him achieving his goals. That said, I think that our current TA, Mr. Gilberto, obviously has given thought to that, and he's come up with what he thinks is a good game plan and approach. So, I mean, I'd like, I think there could be some discussion on this. I think it's worth having the discussion to get, to understand it better. But usually, when we have someone who's responsible for managing the team, so to speak, they have to make decisions that they think is the best way, you know, best approach. And I've, and I know Mike is not being disrespectful, so I have a lot of respect for what you have done since you've come on as the Town Administrator. So, you know, maybe it's worth having some discussion on it, just so that we're sure that, at least from our end, we're confident in his approach. And I do have a lot, you know, like 99.9% confidence in, if he suggests something, it's a good idea. But, you know, like anything, it's worth discussing, maybe there's something we haven't seen or haven't looked at, so.
Mr. O'Leary?
I'm not so concerned about what we call the position. It's, and I think depending upon what the job description is going to be, you know, it just goes beyond insurance. We're involved, collective bargaining, I would assume we're involved, you know, personnel administration, which is, you know, whether the Assistant Town Administrator or Human Resources Director, again, the title is not important to me. I think the, as the Town Administrator is suggesting here, we have an overwhelming workload that overworks some of our personnel individually. And it's been an issue for years. And again, when we created the position, Human Resources Director, per se, previously, the responsibilities have fluctuated over the years based upon time constraints and ability of certain people to perform certain functions. So again, whether we call it Assistant Town Administrator, Human Resources Director, probably based upon, which, and again, I haven't had a conversation with you in relation to the specific job description, but my guess is most of it would be human resource-related in relation to personnel administration, collective bargaining, as well as insurance, which is really eating up most of Allison's time. So, again, I think it's probably most appropriately, human resources. But, and I defer to you as far as what the job description is going to be. There's no doubt there's absolutely a need for additional support in administration. We've got pretty big business here, and we're operating on a shoestring with short staff. And responsibilities are growing, the need to address the situations on a timely basis genuinely beyond the control of one individual, and I don't want to see it get run into the ground. But, again, you want to call this individual a Human Resource Director?
Clearly, there's a need. I think that maybe it would be easier, easier for the board if we kind of could categor, you could categorize what you think the responsibilities of this individual should be. And I was about to say the same thing Steve said, associated with, leave the title off of it, define the role, and then we can determine what the title's going to be. Does that make sense? Yes?
I think it makes a lot of sense, and it's a great suggestion, because I think you need to sit down and really think about what things eat your lunch every day, what is really eating up all your time and taking your focus on the big picture. You know, we have a strategic plan, the things we're trying to do for the town, we have a lot of infrastructure projects ahead of us. So what are those things that keep distracting you? And when you write all that down, if it leads you more towards this HR director, then so be it. But I think what you're going to find when you sit down and you're really serious about writing this stuff down, I think you're going to lead you towards somebody that does, that has to be very strong in personnel, has to be able to, when there's a personnel issue, they don't walk into the Town Administrator's Office anymore, they go to the Assistant Town Administrator. They try to work it out at that level, and then it has to elevate into you, then so be it. But I think a lot can be done there, and I think it would be very good for this current HR department to have an adult supervisor like that that they can go to on a daily basis as well. But it gives you another opportunity to have someone, you can send them off to the, to, you know, deal with FinCom on some things that are, you know, just top general stuff that doesn't, they could float around and do many different things for you and take a lot of that stuff off your plate. So I think it's a great exercise. I look forward to seeing the results of it if you decide to take us up on it.
I appreciate the feedback and certainly take the comments constructively, and as we look towards the reconciliation for the budget prior to Town Meeting, we'll come back with a response. I'll speak with the Finance Director and see what we have. One thing I would note is a, really putting it in here, it's intended to be more than anything, a resource for our employees with regard to providing them perhaps programming that might not be available to them right now, a resource for the board with regard to larger collective bargaining strategy-related items. This wasn't necessarily born out of the need with regard to my particular workload, but more out of those factors. But I understand and I respect the comments, and we'll take them into consideration over the next few weeks.
FinCom, any questions regarding the TA? Can Cal, any questions regarding the TA? Board members, any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the last one. We have TA report and then executive session.
Nine o'clock, look at that, right on the money.
Town administrator report.
Fairly, just one moment, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, sure. They can stay until we go into executive session.
I just have three comments for this evening's selectmen's meeting. The first is that I would like to recognize the staff at the Department of Public Works for their efforts handling the snowstorm of March twentieth to the twenty-first. Mike Sorgan, the acting director, and the acting general foreman, Chris Demming, made arrangements to have contractors and seasonal employees available to assist the current complement of ten Department of Public Works employees in responding to the storm. Additionally, the towns of Linfield and Reading made one truck each available, although we were not required to utilize these resources. The storm was a challenge, not necessarily in terms of responding to it, but in terms, not in terms of the amount of snow, but in terms of the timing of the snow, and when it really kicked into high gear, and in terms of the fluctuating forecast over the four or five days beforehand. But there was a significant amount of effort that went into planning for the storm, and I just want to recognize the folks at DPW for their efforts, planning for and executing in response to the storm. Secondly, I make a note for the community and for the board. The closure of the Town Hall, which was originally scheduled for March sixteenth for critical incident training, has been rescheduled to Thursday, April seventh, from twelve o'clock noon till four o'clock PM. We will put an announcement up on Town News and the Town website on, we'll ask NORC to put a slide up as well, and we'll work with the transcript as well to get word out there to let folks know of that closure. Again, it'll be half-day, in the afternoon on Thursday, April seventh. And I just want to thank the Police Department for their assistance in planning for this event. And the final note, just a general update to the community, the town's administrative investigation and the criminal investigation into the Department of Public Works both continue. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Hold on, new business? Michael?
Yes. On March sixteenth, we had our first workshop for the water infrastructure project. And we had about thirty people here in attendance in this room, and I thought that was great. Amongst all the other things that had taken place a couple of weeks prior to that, to have that many people show up with very little information getting released out there, I was very happy with that. And there was a lot of good questions, a lot of good feedback. The presentations are available on our website, and I think you can reach it through our Town website, right?
That's correct. If you look on the homepage under project updates, there's an entire page dedicated to the water permitting process.
So we continue to have a lot of activity for the water project. We met again today with Reading, and they have been very, very enthusiastic about helping us continue down this road and getting this all ready for June Town Meeting. There's a lot that has to happen between now and June Town Meeting. So we are going to have another work, workshop on May eleventh at the Distance Learning Lab at the high school, seven PM, and Reading will be there, their technical staff will be there, and MWR representatives from MWRA will be there as well. And I think the public will have another opportunity to come in, ask any questions, any concerns. We can clarify any misconceptions that may be going on, and I think you'll find it very informative, and I hope everybody participates. And I will sure bring it up again in a future meeting. Just wanted to chat a little bit about Central Street, and I talked to the town administrator about this. I was a little sad to see that we cut into Central Street, but I understand we had to. But I think if we could just make a commitment, since the residents of Central Street have waited so long, and the residents of this town have waited so long for Central Street to get cleaned up and fixed up with the new paving, which they've done a wonderful job, but to start cutting into it already, it breaks my heart. But, and I know it's a little extra money, but if we can afford it in our DPW budget to infrared that, so it sails that road up, so we don't start having potholes again, because, boy, it hasn't been a year yet, and we're cutting to a six-by-six piece of that. So, I don't know if you want to mention anything about it, but I would request that you at least consider it to keep that road nice and clean.
Certainly, I can speak to it. So there, as the board is aware, there was, I believe, a multi-year effort to replace the original services to homes along Central Street prior to it being repaved last year. And the home in question was not one of the homes that dated to the construction of the street, or wasn't as old as the others that were replaced. It had, my understanding is that it had a copper line, and that that copper line would not have been scheduled and was not scheduled for replacement as part of the preparation for Central Street repair. However, it developed a leak. It's a pinhole-style leak, which is something that we are seeing develop. It's more, I guess, the word that I've heard from the water superintendent is that it's the sort of phenomenon that's occurring with regard to copper service that we're dealing with, but it does require repair and unfortunately require the road to be dug up. Nobody wanted to authorize the road to be dug up, to be candid with you, but it was becoming a point where the water was bubbling up, and there really was no, no choice. But I want to stress, it wasn't an issue of planning improperly, it was an issue that it was a service that really shouldn't have, shouldn't have leaked that did. I think with regard to the proposal for infrared repair, that's something that we'll evaluate, and I'll ask the Public Works, the acting Public Works Director to take into consideration this week.
And I did, and just one last thing I did feel to mention in discussion with the water project, in our meeting today with Reading, they had actually come up with a great suggestion to have a joint meeting with the Reading Board of Selectmen and the North Reading Board of Selectmen, and would like to do it a couple of times. We were originally gonna have them come to our May ninth meeting, but since we're having the water project on May eleventh, if it's, if the board members are available, and we could post a meeting at six o'clock, that would be one hour before the start of the workshop, that gives us an opportunity to have a joint meeting with Reading in the public setting to exchange information, exchange questions, and make sure that their board is very comfortable with what we're doing with their staff, and make sure our board is very comfortable as well.
Sometime later, because their town meeting-
Is in November.
Is in November, we would do the same in Reading.
Correct. So the board members could just check your calendars and see if that was, you had some availability, six PM on the eleventh, a joint meeting with the town of Reading Selectmen?
Where would we do that?
It will be at the Distance Learning Lab. We'll post it there, since we're gonna be having the workshop there. We'll get into the room an hour early. I'm gonna also ask NORC if they could have the workshop, you know, publicized, if that's something that's available, or at least record it and post it at another date. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Hold on, I want to check my calendar on that. Okay, that's why I just, he mentioned the eleventh, and I want to make sure, it's April eleventh, you were saying.
I'm sorry, May eleventh. Mr. Yul, May eleventh.
Oh, I got the workshop.
Jeff?
I have the workshop down, yeah, for the eleventh.
Your turn.
Oh, it's my turn? Okay. All right, I got three things. First of all, I want to kind of apologize to the board for something that I inadvertently had done a bunch of months ago by sitting in a, a meeting, an executive session meeting that I shouldn't have sat in. It wasn't intentional, and I didn't realize until it was brought to my attention. Then I recused myself, and I left. So I just felt that I, I owe that to the board, and that, you know, I've been thinking about that for a long time, so. So I hope you accept my apology for that.
I don't recall.
Well, guilty conscience, I guess, you know? Yes, you were. So, but in any event, the other thing is regarding the DPW and what has transpired and that, we've gotten a lot of feedback from a lot of people in the community, and they feel so, so bad for the employees that are currently with the DPW. They didn't, no one has felt that it was a reflection of the current employees of the DPW. They always felt that they did a good job, you know, anyway, but that they were very positive on, on, on the current employees of the DPW. And I think that needs to be said because they deserve a fair shake, that's the only way I can put that. But I want to go back to, it was five years ago, when I was on the board in my second year, I believe, or maybe third year on the board, and I had recommended to the board that we have a complete audit of our top three departments, which is the police, fire, and DPW. And I said that that was the time to do it because, and I believe it was when the chief, Chief Murphy came on, okay? So maybe it was longer than that. But I made that suggestion simply because there was no, no concerns at the time. There was nothing to worry about at the time, and it would have been, my suggestion was that we have a full audit on those three departments on a five-year gap, you know, every five years, alternating. And had we done that back then, I mean, I can't say for certain, but had we done that back then and implemented a transparent audit on the departments, we would not be, I don't believe that we, we might not have had the situation that we have now. Because it would have been done on, on a positive note versus a negative note. And I implore every member of the board to really consider implementing an auditing process for the three major departments so that we can be, be sure or be confident that everything is being done in a way that it should be. You know, we can use the experts, they can be helpful to us. So I'd like you all to consider this. Again, this would be my, my fifth time making this recommendation. I just, it's unfortunate that we have an environment right now that, that is not positive, and I would have liked to have seen this done a long time ago. And I, I even said back then that, you know, let's do it now, while, you know, while everything's okay. This is the time to do it. So I hope you heed my suggestion, and we can talk about it further. On another note, the Department of Public Utilities, I'm just gonna remind the public on this, is, it was in, in the transcript, and I believe it's on our website, but the Department of Public Utilities is having a survey hearing Wednesday, April sixth at seven PM in Linfield Middle School Auditorium at five oh five Main Street. They're also having one on Thursday, April fourteenth at seven PM in Andover High School Auditorium at eighty Shawshin Road. As I said, I believe it's on our website, is that correct?
That's correct.
And it was in the transcript as well, a very fine article there. And this is, also, if you can't make that meeting, you have time to make written comments that we accept it through May sixth. And the details are on the website and in the transcript, so I just wanted to share that with everybody. And I hope everybody had a wonderful, wonderful Easter. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
First of all, I'd just like to acknowledge the passing of retired Sergeant Didi O'Connor, who served the community for almost twenty years. He was our first K-9 officer and a true leader of the, of the department, retired a few years back, but a great individual, great personality within the department and within the community, and just passed away this past week. But Didi is a great guy, great police officer. And again, I know that the North River Police Department mourns his loss, and so too, my condolences to his family and to, to the North River Police Department, passing Sergeant O'Connor. Just in, Jeff brought up, as far as, as far as an audit, what could have been found, what would have been found, what may have been found, other comments that have been made in relation to poor leadership and all that, I just think it's a little bit unfortunate right now, you know, as we, say we're concerned about the remaining employees, all the discussion isn't helpful at all, you know, until we get the, the results of the ongoing investigations. In relation to an audit, depends on what you mean by an audit. I mean, the numbers are what they are, and those get looked at on a regular basis as to whether or not, how the monies were appropriated, whether they were spent appropriately, I mean, that's, that's one form of an audit. Talk about a compliance audit, that's something different. If you're talking about an internal controls audit, that's something different. So I'm not entirely clear, you know, what we're maybe suggesting here. You know, as far as the DPW employees who were currently with us and the ones who decided to leave, I think it's important to note, again, you know, the Public Works Director was not involved in any drug dealings, and I know this was stated over and over and over again, but I hear all over town, I'm a little tax season, so I see hundreds of clients a week here, the misconception that's out there as to why the DPW Director left, why so many employees resigned, I would just hope that we would be able to disclose more of the facts as soon as possible. And I don't know where, I guess we're gonna find it a little later, you know, where the investigations are. But it's, it's very unfortunate and unfair to our town employees. They're being painted with a broad brush unnecessarily and unfairly. I think, again, I don't have any true basis of facts, and maybe more members of the board have more facts than I do, but it appears there may have been some internal control issues here. It appears as though we have some individuals who are in the employ of the town that have some personal issues that need to be addressed. But we don't have a department full of drug dealers. That's not the case. And I think it's important to let people know that, that, wait till everything comes out, and find out what the facts are shortly, I hope. But I think our own chatter is unfortunately further maligning the reputation of the DPW, town employees, this administration, this board unfairly. So I think, don't throw cautious, caution to the wind. I think we need to be careful and choose our words carefully, and in the meantime, support the employees that we have. Great group of employees, very dedicated, and they're all very hurt by what's occurred. So for those people that have resigned and need some help, I hope they get that, what they need. It's unfortunate, we won't necessarily be able to play a role in offering that assistance, but it's played out the way that it has. So with that, though, try and be quiet. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's a sad situation, and it's one that, I think you're right, Steve, the sooner all the details are out, and I understand that, you know, it's a police investigation, and they're still working on it, it will be very helpful. In the meantime, we, as a board, need to stay in support of our town employees. They continue to do a great job. A number of them have stepped up to fill the void, and you're right about those that have resigned. I would guess, not knowing too much about them and what their issues were, that they could all use a little help. Before we adjourn and go into executive session, I just want to, you know, again, call attention to the town of Reading and, you know, the meeting we had this morning because of, you know, the fact that you feel welcome, you feel like they want to work with us a hundred percent, and, you know, it's a great feeling based on what we've experienced in the past and other places. So that I wanted to get, get out to them. And then, I'm gonna repeat this again because I think it's important, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but the Spring Wine and Food Social is scheduled for this Friday, April first, seven to ten, in the New Hill View, and it's forty dollars per ticket, and I would encourage everyone to go.
Read his hand, too.
Hi, Rita.
Farmers Market is on Saturdays, while-
Farmers Market's on Saturday?
It's Saturday after your night of the hills, Saturday morning, nine to one, Farmers Market. Hope you can all be there.
And that issue get resolved?
It's a different issue, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Excuse me. Do you have somebody?
Mr. Chairman, I forgot, while my presentation, to say that-
that as part of our computer replacement program, we have three iPads here for the three members of the board that have town-issued iPads. And they're available to, to, to give to you. The only remaining task is to set up your email. You can do it after the meeting tonight if you like, or at another meeting, or at any time that you, is convenient with you. So, let me know. I'm available if you're available.
You don't have to wait around for me this evening. I'll pitch during the week sometime.
Yeah, I'll come in, I'll come in.
Catherine? Talking to you too. You're one of the recipients of a new iPad.
Okay, that's great.
So, do you want to do it after the meeting? Or do you want to? You're going to be in executive session, so.
Yes.
Yeah, let's not keep, yeah, maybe you can catch up.
We'll all make arrangements.
We'll all make arrangements, yeah.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Jim. I will now ask for motion to adjourn to executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to enter into executive session for the purposes of exemption three, litigation strategy, exemption five, investigate charges of criminal misconduct or consider the filing of criminal charges, and exemption seven, comply with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 214, Section 1B, general privacy. Such discussions in open session will have detrimental, have a detrimental impact on the town, and to admit the following people. Are we admitting anybody?
No.
Okay.
Second.
And further, I'm not finished, no. But I do that all the time. And further, that the board of selectmen will return to open session for adjournment.
Second.
Okay.
I go a roll call vote. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Ms. Steele?
Aye.
Ms. Matt Bellin?
Aye.
Mr. Prisco?
Aye.
Chair votes, I'll call for a five-minute recess.